We're calling the meeting to order. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a special virtual board meeting tonight that all can participate in remotely. You can join via Zoom. Specific directions on how to participate are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, NVUSD.org/Board. To open session, the open session part of the meeting agenda begins at 6:00 PM. Now on to public comment on closed session items. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Is there any public comment on closed session items, Mr. Reese?
As President Gonzalez, we do have a public comment. Let's start with Tracy Moskowitz.
Hi, I wanted to double check this is on the agenda item, correct?
This is for closed session, Ms.?
Oh, sorry.
Yep, the open session is at 6:00. At 6:00, yes. Is there any other public comment, Mr. Reese?
There are no other public comments at this time, President Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. We are now adjourning to closed session. See you all back at 6:00, thank you. We are reconvening to open session. Good evening, my name is Elba Gonzalez. And this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a special board meeting tonight that all can participate in remotely. You can join via Zoom. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Elba Gonzalez Mares. Y esta es la mesa de educación del distrito escolar unificado del Valle de Napa. NVUSD por sus siglas en inglés. La mesa de educación de NVUSD está llevando a cabo una reunión especial esta noche en la que todos pueden participar de forma remota. Puede unirse a través de Zoom. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. To access interpretation from a computer, click on the interpretation icon on the bottom of your screen from within the Zoom application. On a mobile device, click on the more button on the bottom of your screen and choose language interpretation from within the Zoom application. This is a separate channel that will allow you to hear English to Spanish translation concurrently. Please note interpretation channel interpretation services are not available when you join our meeting by calling in. Our interpreters for tonight's meetings are Paul Huertas and Claudia Lindgren. May we have one of the interpreters please translate these directions on our English channel so our Spanish speaking families can hear the instructions.
Buenas noches, la reunión de esta noche se va a ser también transmitida en el idioma español para acceder a ustedes a esta grabación en español. En la parte baja de su pantalla van a encontrar una figura de un globo terráqueo. Por favor, le hacen clic a esa figura e inmediatamente va a aparecer la palabra español e inglés Spanish. Ustedes van a escoger y le hacen clic al idioma, a la palabra Spanish para que puedan acceder a la interpretación en el español de esta reunión, la reunión de esta noche, gracias.
Gracias. Specific instructions on how to participate in the meeting are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, NVUSD.org/Board. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, student board member Magaña.
Present.
Trusty Gonzalez Mares.
Present.
Trusty Jankowicz.
Present.
Trusty Gracia.
Present.
Trusty Ryser.
Present.
Trusty Water.
Present.
Trusty Shu.
Present.
Trusty Dooley.
Present.
Coram, present, thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Thank you for joining us tonight for our Napa Valley Unified School District Board meeting. Public participation remains virtual, online only due to COVID-19 shelter in place order. We continue in uncharted territory as we deal with COVID-19 pandemic. As trustees, we have returned to the boardroom in solidarity with our staff given that our school campuses are now reopened for our students. However, in order to ensure access to our meetings without any limitation during the persisting pandemic, we are continuing with online remote access via Zoom for the public and guests. I would like to thank our employees, our families and the entire NVUSD community for how you have supported each other and come together during these unprecedented times. The meeting tonight is in accordance with the open meeting rules in the state of California for the governor's order. I am going to start tonight with some basic instructions on how we are going to be using Zoom and involve the members of the community. All Board of Trustees and the Superintendent are in video throughout the entire board meeting from here in the boardroom. Other staff members are present but by audio only. Members of the community will not be on video and will be muted except during public comment. During public comment, any member of the community that wishes to speak must raise their hand using the raised hand feature in Zoom. You will be unmuted and will be provided three minutes to speak. There are two ways to make public comment within the allotted, within the time allotted for public comment on an eligible agenda item. To comment by video conference, click the raise your hand button to request us to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item. When it is your turn to speak, your name will be called out. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Instructions on how to raise your hand are available on the district's website at NVUSD.org/Board. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine to request to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item. When it is your turn to speak, the last four digits of your phone number will be called out. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Instructions on how to raise your hand by phone are available on the district's website at NVUSD.org/Board. In addition, community members were allowed to submit comments via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org up until 8:00 AM this morning. Public comment received after 8:00 AM the day of the scheduled meeting will not be read into the record. However, the public comment will be announced as received after the deadline and will become part of the meeting archive as long as it is received before the meeting is officially called to order. For every agenda item, I will prompt the meeting participants to have joined us via Zoom for public comment. Please follow the instructions just provided when you would like to comment on an item. We have been called to order and conducted our attendance roll call. We will go forward with our agenda. We will now start with report on closed session items, trustee Gracia.
Yes, there is nothing to report from closed session.
Thank you, trustee Gracia. And now we will do our flag salute since we have here, present here with us, our superintendent. She can lead us on that.
......................................................
We're on to item E3, announcement. This meeting is recorded for live streaming and archiving on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced located on the district webpage at NVUSD.org. The public can join the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom. Participation instructions and the process for public comment can be found on the district webpage. We will now go to item E4, approval of special session agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
A first by trustee Gracia and a second by trustee Water. Student board rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You oppose, abstain? Thank you. Next item is now our presentation and discussion item. And this is a presentation of the middle school demographic analysis, redesign task force, closure and consolidation of recommendation and next steps for implementation.
So, good evening, NVUSD Board of Education, staff and community. Tonight, the board will engage in the difficult work of considering the staff recommendation for closing and consolidating schools at the middle school level. We all know that school closure and consolidation is such an emotional, sensitive, challenging and complex matter. Unfortunately, due to the external forces that have created a dramatic declining enrollment environment in our state and more specifically in the Napa Valley, we find ourselves facing this predicament. As a reminder, this discussion tonight impacts our entire middle school landscape. The board has grappled with our financial challenges and rightsizing the district over the course of the last three years. I know we are all aware of the fact that we must advance the school closure plan at the middle school level in NVUSD. But like I shared in the last session of the task force, please remember that this is a hard road we must walk in order to reach a final destination. That final destination for us is about students and generating the financial resources necessary to ensure all of our students, not just some of our students, have access to high-quality programming sustainably, equitably and consistently across the school sites that remain. This issue will require the district to do really hard work to support students, families and staff through a potentially very difficult transition. And I want to let the board and the community know that my staff and I are prepared to do the hard work and provide the necessary support. As we consider this challenging financial and facilities decision, I want to remind the board that nested within all of this, we have two primary goals. Number one, again, to improve and create sustainable, high-quality middle school programming for current and future middle school students in the Napa Valley Unified School District. And secondly, to improve the only existing K-12 pathway that we have in our district, which is the NVUSD dual immersion program. Tonight, we will start with a presentation from our demographer, Mr. Rob Murray from King Consulting Services. His report will ground us in why we must face this difficult decision. His presentation will continue to solidify our understanding of how the dramatic enrollment decline poses serious threats to the programs and services that we can offer students in both the short term and long term if we do not advance a school closure consolidation plan. When he's done, the assistant superintendents, Ms. Dana Page and Ms. Pat Andrew Jennings, along with myself, will present on the work of the task force, the formal staff recommendation that we're going to ask the governance team to consider, and our proposed next steps for moving forward. So with that, I want to welcome the community that's here tonight. We invite the community for engagement and I know that there will be a lot of listening and learning as we gather public comment and input. So first, we're going to launch with our presentation and I'd like to introduce Mr. Rob Murray, who will start with that demographer report focused on the middle school level.
Alright, thank you Superintendent Musetti and board. We have a lot of information that we're going to be getting through. So I'm just going to go ahead and get to our presentation if we can do the next slide, please. So again, this is an overview of a lot of the key takeaways from a much larger study document. Not every component of the full study will be covered here. We're really just going to be looking at some of the key district and community demographics that are really the main driving forces behind the enrollment pattern that we're seeing. We're going to touch in on some student generation rates and residential development and spatial analysis before we finish with the full enrollment projections. Next slide, please. And again. So first, we just look at a brief history of the NVUSD school district enrollment. And you see increasing enrollment actually through the end of last decade and the first few years of this decade peaking in 2014 before beginning to decline. And then you will see a couple of years where it looks like enrollment is going up. But what's happening here, if you'll see those footnotes, is the transition of River Middle and NVLA from charter status to district school status. And if you go to the next slide where we do it apples to apples and look at historical enrollment with those schools added in for all historical years, now you see that you reached that peak in 2014, 15. And then every year since then, there has been steady decrease in that total enrollment number. But next slide, it is even more important to break that down and look at what is happening on a grade by grade level. And this is where you're going to first see what's happening here, which is that smaller groups of kindergarten students are coming in. And every time a small kindergarten cohort enters the district and replaces a larger cohort that's leaving, whether that's a fifth grade cohort moving into middle school or a graduating senior cohort for total enrollment. But that enrollment level is going to decrease every time you have a smaller group coming in and taking the place of a larger group that's leaving. And so you see on the top chart that elementary enrollment actually peaked in 2013 and has been going down every year aside. Again, here we have the issue where in the most recent year, we're adding the NVLA enrollment in. But that is not really a gain in the number of students. You see high school enrollment has actually been increasing during this time because you had those larger cohorts from when the district was growing are still reaching high school. And so at the high school level, the new cohorts coming in are actually larger than the ones leaving. But that is about the change at high school. This is actually based on our projections going to be your peak at those grades as well. You see that at the middle school level, peak enrollment occurred in 2017. And then again, aside from when River enrollments were added to the totals, that enrollment has begun to go down. You have those smaller cohorts entering middle school. And then you see on the bottom that kindergarten cohorts used to come into the district above 1,200 students every year. Now you are below 1,000 students in 2018. And if not for adding in the around 96 or so NVLA kindergarten students to this total just in 2020, 2020 also would have been below 1,000 if you're comparing consistently with those previous years. Next slide, please. This is just a little nudge to keep this cohort in mind, that cohort that began as kindergarten students in 2017, 1,129. You'll see that's what we're calling your last larger sized cohort. And we're going to be looking ahead and circling back to that cohort when we look at the enrollment projection. So I just wanted to point that out here. Next slide, please. So a little bit of a demographic background. You'll see the three communities that largely make up the NVUSD. American Canyon had substantial growth between 2000 and 2010 and still grew in total population, but not nearly as rapidly from 2010 to the most recent release of census data. Napa, as far as the city of Napa, has increased in total population every year. And Yountville has decreased since 2000. But if you look at that population by age, here is what's key. Just because you're growing in overall population does not mean that you're growing in your school age population. In this case, the community of Napa particularly, that population growth has been largely, and I would actually say even more rapid in the older age cohorts there, while the school age population is actually diminishing. If you go to the next slide, a couple of other census stats that drive this home, the percent of households with any individual under 18 residing in them. You see in American Canyon, a big increase from 2000 to 2010. And still around half of households in American Canyon have some individual under the age of 18. In Napa, meanwhile, you've gone from over a third of households to just over a quarter of households that have some individual under 18 just within the last decade. And Yountville has been steadily declining on this metric. Next slide, please. Now briefly, there is some residential development happening within the district. And it's important to look at what we call student generation rates to understand what kind of impact that development will have. Next slide, please. So first, what are we talking about with student generation rates? And this is surveying recent residential construction and seeing how many students there are over a number of units that have been constructed to get an average rate of how many students you'll expect from upcoming residential construction. American Canyon versus the Napa-Yountville area have very different profiles. So we do this calculation separately for each area. We also look at four different kinds of housing. Single-family detached, which are homes for sale that do not share any kind of wall with any other dwelling. And so typically you have your separate house with some sort of private yard versus a single-family attached home, which could be townhomes, duplexes, condominiums, but typically a little smaller size, little to no yard size and shared walls of some sort with some other unit. And then you have multifamily, this is more rental apartment housing. And then finally, any sort of affordable housing will tend to have a higher rate of student generation. So we do look at that separately to look at the affordable component, if any, in any of these residential projects. Now that said, there's a lot of numbers on this slide, but what we're really getting at is that in American Canyon, student generation rates are higher than their equivalent types of units in Napa. Sometimes for single-family detached, much higher. And also, since we've been working with the Napa Valley USD for a number of years, we can compare how these student generation rates have looked over time. And from the previous year to the current year, we're seeing again, aside from the single-family detached in American Canyon, which was a little higher this year, every other type of housing in every other part of the district saw lower rates of student generation this year compared to the previous study. And the main reason for that, as we go to the next slide, like to point out that that we also looked at the resales where we have better data on each year, the number of units sold, what the price was, and then how many students are moving into those units. It tends to correlate pretty well with the single-family detached new construction rates. But what we can really see here is that as the price of housing increases, the number of students that you get from a particular housing unit is decreasing. This is particularly pronounced in the Napa area, but is certainly occurring to an extent in American Canyon as well. And those home prices, there is a lot of information about why that is occurring. But this is very much tied to the increase in the older population, the decrease of younger families who are living in the area as the cost of housing increases. Napa County actually one of the top most unaffordable places in the country in a direct comparison of local wages to the cost of housing. And that is showing in the demographics as time goes on. Next slide, please. So looking in American Canyon, you have some larger projects that are here. Watson Ranch being the one that is gearing up to begin putting new units on the ground in the very near future. And then Ode Hill recently getting some approvals. The Broadway District specific plan will be a long-term project, but some units expected in the short term from that. And then if we go to the next slide, in the city of Napa, there are outside of Napa Pipe, which will have a larger number of units all at once. There are just a lot of smaller projects and some of these are still, you know, just market driven, just putting up just a few houses over time. And so if we go to the next slide, we have a summary of what all this means in terms of the total number of units from all the development that we just saw on those maps and based on those student generation rates, how many students there are. And a lot of people are surprised when they see the relatively low number of students that are being generated. But you keep in mind that a lot of these units that are being built are single-family attached or are those multifamily units that on a per-unit basis, based on looking at what's been recently constructed, aren't bringing a lot of families with young kids, with school-aged children moving in to occupy those units when they're built. And again, the price of those units has a lot to do with that. Next slide, please. So a very quick bit of the spatial analysis. There was a lot of this in the full study, but we want to touch on a couple of points. So next slide, please. We have the spatial analysis matrix. And this one shows for the elementary schools, but it's a useful tool. We're not going to go into all these numbers, but what it really shows is that for any combination of what school boundary students reside in versus what school they attend, there was a lot of movement and choice being exercised in this district of people living in one boundary but going to school in a different boundary. So this is just more included to show how much movement there is of the student population. Next slide, please. And we see this net migration, which is just the difference between movement of these elementary boundaries of how many students are coming in to the school who live elsewhere versus how many who live in that boundary are going out. Again, you do see those Pablo Vista and NVLA with those special programs drawing in a lot of students from outside of those boundaries. And then various other patterns of where students are in large part leaving from in much greater numbers than they're coming to and vice versa. Next slide, please. Yeah, and then one other point from the spatial analysis that's important to note, especially in the face of the declining enrollment numbers that we're seeing across the board, is that the district is enrolling an increasing number every year of students from outside of the district. And this is district policy, this is an intentional decision. But if this were not occurring, you would have been seeing even more of a steep decrease in enrollment from just the resident students of the NVUSD. And a lot of this is at American Canyon High School. If you see those, the top bar with the high school grades would be 315 there. Next slide, please. Now the enrollment projections. So let's move to the next slide. There are a few key things, and this is one of those that I alluded to earlier. The most important determinant for the size of that new cohort that comes in every year. And if it's smaller than the cohort that's leaving, that you would expect total enrollment to decrease is the number of local births. And then five years later, we look at the size of the cohort of kindergarten enrollment. And so we are including the births in Napa-Yountville and in American Canyon separately. And you see that there has been a decrease in those numbers in both areas, but it is particularly steep in the Napa area. You previously routinely saw around 1,200 births per year. We are now to the kindergarten cohort that was based on a birth year that had 1,039 births. And you see what is coming up soon are some very, very small years of birth. The most recent in 2018, as compiled by the California Department of Public Health, based on the zip code of the mother's residence. So this is regardless of where the birth took place. So capturing all births from mothers who live in the zip codes associated with this school district shows these very small birth cohorts that are going to be your next few years of kindergarten enrollment. And then as those cohorts continue to matriculate through the system, they replace the larger cohorts that came before them. And that was why I circled that 2017 kindergarten cohort. Because as you see from the birth profile of what we know the next few kindergarten cohorts are drawing from, there are just fewer children to come and enroll in schools. Next slide, please. So once those cohorts enter the district, we do track how they grow over time. So again, in Napa-Yountville, you see the overall rate of change of all the K-11 students in one year. And then the next year, all of the first through 12th grade students. So in a bubble, the students that you would expect to just come back the next year. In reality, you have a lot of students who are moving out and a lot of students who are moving in. But on net, we see that once those cohorts are enrolled in NVUSD in the Napa area, they stay very close to the same size, plus or minus half percent total growth from year to year over the last several years. In American Canyon, we do see more positive growth. A lot of that is driven by some influx of out-of-district students, but there is also some resident growth there. So next slide, please. So what this is getting to is that really the size of that incoming cohort and the size of the cohort that it's replacing, whether within a grade configuration or through the district as a whole, is what's really driving the enrollment trajectory of the NVUSD. Now, in the report, we actually prepare separate projections for the Napa-Yountville area and the American Canyon area, just because those demographics are rather different. So I apologize for the noise here, let me let the motorcycles go by, and then I will pick up again. So we have also three enrollment projections for each area. A moderate and then a low and high projection. Napa Valley USD tends to use a combination of the low projection for Napa-Yountville and a moderate projection for American Canyon. This has proved to be very accurate over recent years. And I'm only going to be showing that district-wide planning projection here, but the full study document contains all of those projections and the assumptions that go into them. So next slide, please. So again, a lot of numbers, but we're going to go ahead and go to the next slide. This will be a little easier to see. So what we have here is that cohort that we saw before, who started off in 2017 as that new kindergarten cohort. as that new kindergarten cohort, are the current third-grade cohort. You look at all of the numbers above that highlighted 1,237 in the current year, and they are all much smaller. You see next year, that will be the fourth-grade cohort, and then in 2022, the fifth-grade cohort. And then in 2023, that is the cohort that moves into middle school. And you see immediately what happens with those highlighted cells a little further down. The total TK5 enrollment takes a really sharp dive because you have over 1,200 students leaving the elementary grades and only a little over 900 students coming in to replace them. And again, we have these projections of kindergarten based on, we know at least through 2018 births, that's that 2023 kindergarten cohort is just going to be very low. We actually see that as the lowest point, but by the time those slightly larger cohorts are coming in, they're still smaller than the cohorts you had just a few years ago. And then if we follow those orange cells down a little more, 2024 would be seventh grade and then eighth grade. So by 2026, that last large cohort has exited the middle school grades. And you see, just like you did in elementary school, another large one-year decline in that total middle school population that will occur at that time. So next slide, please. So a little focus on those middle school enrollments. So first, what you have on top, and I want to be clear here, that what we have on top is looking at all NVUSD sixth through eighth-grade students. So that includes sixth graders who are at NVLA. This also includes River and NVLA included in all past years, so that we're seeing consistent totals with what we'll be seeing going forward. And then there are a handful of sixth grade through eighth grade students who are in things like the independent study program, who are also included in these totals. So what we're seeing on top are all of the sixth through eighth grade students. And you see just as recently as 2014 through 2017, around 1,400 or even well above 1,400 students coming into middle school. Again, those are those students who were in those cohorts when the district was growing, when they came in as kindergartners. Now, the middle school grades are starting to see those smaller cohorts that have been coming in, entering middle school. That's been happening, you see from 2017 to 2018. You had a pretty big one-year adjustment. And then you've already gone below 1,300. And we project that aside from when that last large cohort in 2023 enters sixth grade, that will be the last cohort of that general size that will be in middle school for a while. Because once you have those small cohorts entering, it takes years and years for them to matriculate all the way through the district. So it will be, unless there is a great influx of students from outside of everything that's been accounted for in these projections. If local births take a massive spike up from what we've been seeing, but the California State Department of Finance that does birth projections does not see that happening. There is just no situation where this pattern will not continue with smaller cohorts entering middle school and replacing those larger cohorts that have been there from when the district just had more students living in it. And then looking at the chart on the bottom, or the table, I should say, is the specific middle school. So again, these totals are lower than the totals above because there are some sixth-grade students who are not shown in these middle school numbers. And you see that American Canyon Middle School is really on a different trajectory just because of its location and the community it's in, having different demographics than the other middle schools. And I know that is a lot of information that has been part of some of the other presentations for the middle school committee. Next slide, please. And then just a quick, just check-in that we like to do. We have the projections that we prepared for next year, and we looked at the pre-enrollment numbers as of March 1st. And you see for most grades, we are very, very close to where the projections show. Again, this, once those cohorts enter NVUSD, we have a very good, stable idea of how they grow year to year. And then at those TK and K grades, typically enrollment in those grades will happen throughout the spring and summer. So those should catch up to the projected level by the time we get to the census day in the fall. And to a lesser extent, that also occurs at ninth grade. So next slide, please. So that is it for the prepared material. So thank you for allowing me the chance to present that here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. And Mr. Murray will be not be able to stay. So just before he leaves and we shift to the staff presentation, I just want to ask if any of the trustees have any questions of Mr. Murray?
So I just have a comment really that I wanted to highlight. The enrollment slide for the middle school shows that we have 3,824 total in the 2021 school year. But by the time that number gets to the 27, 28 school year, we will have lost 567 more middle school students. And we presently already have a vacancy of 1,500 empty seats, which will put our total vacancy over 2,000 seats.
Any other questions or comments? And just before, forgot to mention this at the beginning, but as the presentations are going, I will ask the trustees to ask for clarification, questions or comments. And then after public comment, then we'll go into any discussion or final comments at that point. We're good? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Now I'd like to introduce Ms. Dana Page and Ms. Pat Andrew Jennings, our assistant superintendents who will be presenting. I'm gonna sort of start us off here tonight. So if we can get the slide deck up, Mr. Ruiz. Do you have that, Mr. Ruiz?
I'm sorry, what was that, Dr. Masetti?
The staff presentation slides?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you. So you can proceed, Mr. Ruiz, to the next slide. So just to kind of ground everybody really quickly and orient them into the presentation components. You heard my opening, we have the demographic report. And we're gonna just quickly ground us in the budget implications around the enrollment data that Mr. Murray just shared. Ms. Dana Page will provide a summary of the task force process. She will present the formal staff closure consolidation recommendation. Ms. Andrew Jennings will discuss next steps around student placement, middle school redesign phase two. We'll hear from Ms. Dana Page again around staffing and some logistical considerations. And then I'll close the presentation with some expectations for future property asset management and disposition in relation to the staff recommendation for closure and consolidation. Next slide. So it's important for, you know, the board and everyone to understand the connection between enrollment and the district's finances. Clearly, we are a local control funded funding formula model here. And so our revenue is completely based upon enrollment in the district. One of the reasons we find ourselves here tonight, it's the ongoing work that the district's been doing from a facilities and financial standpoint in response to the impacts of declining enrollment. And there are financial impacts with the declining enrollment that Mr. Murray presented on. So in order to protect program and services, we need to address it. This is a slide from Mr. Manguala, our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. This is a slide that the board saw at second interim, showing our multi-year projections. And I just want to illuminate that, you know, the district's done some really hard work over the and the board really has done some really hard work over the course of the last three years, working on rightsizing the district to eliminate what is as structural deficit caused mostly by declining enrollment and working on raising our reserve in order to make sure that we can deal with uncertainty and not put the district in a financial risky situation. You see in our current base here, you see the evidence of that work. You see in our projections right now, at this moment in time, vis a vis second interim, that we have a small deficit and the reserve kind of holds around 9%. And much of that is due to the fact that we right now are being held harmless because of COVID-19 and the pandemic. The governor granted a hold harmless rule where we are being held to our previous enrollment numbers, and we are not quite feeling the decline when it comes to the revenues from the state because we're being held harmless at that previous number. The reason you see this dramatic decrease in 22, 23 is because that is when California school districts who have this temporary protection essentially from declining enrollment, that held harmless reality goes away. And we're hit with the actual relationship between our enrollment projections, or I'm sorry, our current enrollment and our revenues. And so you'll see that we have a structural deficit there of nearly $12 million. And you see that, again, the reserve drops to that near 3%. And just as a reminder, we've had a lot of discussions of this, discussions around this over the course of the last three years, that hovering over that 3% is very risky because it is only slightly over the state requirement, reserve requirement, which is 3%, which is approximately about two to three weeks of payroll in the district. So, you know, when you get to that level of a reserve, you're really one decision, one, you know, incident away from what can be major, major financial issues. And so we've been working hard to avoid any assignment by the state in terms of a fiscal advisor. The board's done really, really hard work. We want to thank you for that. But part of responding to declining enrollment is the closure consolidation plan that we're gonna, we're gonna present to you tonight in order to continue to address the structural deficit that we're faced with, which is cause, the root cause being the declining enrollment. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Dana Page, who's going to start with a summary of the task force process.
Thank you, Dr. Masetti. Mr. Ruiz, could you advance the slides? And one more time, please. Thank you. The middle school redesign task force met a total of six times, as you can see, from January to April, for about two to two to three, sorry, from about two to two and a half hours each session. Next slide. All of the meetings were streamed live for public viewing and recorded. The recordings, along with the agendas and the slide presentations from each session, were archived along the way on the NVUSD website, where they still are now accessible from the homepage. Next slide. The task force was composed of 50 individuals plus two facilitators. There were representatives from all stakeholders comprised as follows. Eight district administrators, two former 7-Eleven committee members who are representing the community, one member of the citizens bond oversight committee, also representing the community members at large. There were two people who serve as D-LAC members, five middle school principals representing all of our NVUSD middle schools, three elementary school principals, two high school principals, eight teachers, two pupil services providers, specifically a social worker and a speech language pathologist, one CSA executive board member, CSA represents our classified employees, and 14 parents, two from each of our middle schools, and four elementary school parents. Next slide. Over the course of the six sessions, together we studied an array of topics. The first three sessions were devoted to learning more information, including the topics you see on this slide. In each of the first three sessions, where a great deal of data and information was presented, the 50 participants were divided into smaller groups where they engaged in a facilitated processing activity, which allowed them to discuss, learn at deeper levels together, and ask follow-up questions. We collected those needs to know, and staff responded at subsequent sessions with additional information and data. Next slide. The community at large had two formal opportunities to provide input and pose questions through the town hall forums that were held on March 8th in English and March 9th in Spanish. Many of our task force members and board members attended these events along with staff to hear the concerns and commentary. These town hall meetings were held after session four, where the initial scenarios were presented and discussed. We also received numerous emails via the email address established for the task force, and every email was forwarded to all the task force members to read throughout the sessions. The viewpoints and suggestions for additional scenarios, which emerged from the town halls and emails, were incorporated into the remaining sessions. Next slide. At the point we began to consider each possible scenario, the task force was asked to use these guiding principles as a basis for determining the degree to which each scenario was viable and met the stated interests, which included program excellence, fiscal solvency, responsible facility management, and equity, all equally important. For this work, we continued to utilize the same small groups where participants processed information earlier in the first three sessions. For this stage of the process, the small groups were asked to discuss each scenario and rate them in each of these four areas from the guiding principles using a stoplight scale, where red meant the scenario did not fulfill the interest at all, yellow if it partially met the interest, and green if it fully fulfilled the interest. We initially started with four scenarios, three of which came from staff and one was proposed from a task force member. In the original set of scenarios, every middle school in the city of Napa was up for consideration for closure. As I stated before, after the town hall meetings, three more scenarios emerged from the task force members and were added to the list for consideration in the small groups. In addition, staff proposed a new scenario which reflected revisions to a previous scenario in response to some of the concerns and criticisms heard at the town halls and from the task force members. In the final analysis, task force members were given latitude, per their request, to consider issues and concerns related to the scenarios outside of the four guiding principles. Next slide. At our final meeting, we asked each small group to report out the conclusion their group came to and to what degree their group had consensus, or were divided, or whether they were one or two, or whether there were one or two members who dissented. And after a great deal of learning, discussion, disagreement, and final analysis, overall, the task force agreed with some dissenting opinions. In alignment with the task force, our staff's recommendation is as follows. The closure of Harvest Middle School and the redesign of the instructional program of River Middle School, so that the campus may be repurposed. The plan is to establish a sixth through eighth-grade language academy at the River Campus. NVLA and Pueblo Vista Elementary Schools are two dual immersion programs, would remain at their current location for elementary, and students would matriculate. And students would matriculate to the new language academy for the sixth through eighth grade. Middle school boundaries would need
Public comment on there. After the item, she just says, do we have any public comment on it? The only time, the only public, yeah, the only public
Ms. Morales, would you please mute?
Middle school boundaries would need to be redrawn so that the students residing in the current Harvest Middle School area would join either Redwood or Silverado Middle Schools or the Language Academy through open enrollment. So I would like to now introduce Ms. Pat Andrew Jennings, who will begin to share next steps if the board approves this action. Go to the next slide, Mr. Ruiz.
Good evening. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Page. I would now like to share what the next steps would be if this recommendation is adopted. We recognize that the closing of a school creates many potential questions. The first for parents being, where will my child attend school? Next slide, please. The first for parents being where will my child attend school? Uh, next slide, please. If the recommendation is adopted, the changes would go into effect the following school year of 2022, 2023. Students attending or slated to.
Yes, we lost you for a moment there. Could you go back to the slide from the beginning?
Okay, thank you. I saw the little sign pop up on my internet. Okay, so students currently scheduled to attend Harvest, River, Silverado and Redwood. Would continue to attend those schools for this upcoming 2021, 2022 school year. If the recommendation is adopted, the changes would go into effect the following school year of 2022, 2023. Students attending or slated to attend Harvest would attend either Redwood or Silverado. If they are in the dual language program, they would attend middle school on the River Campus. Students currently scheduled to attend River would attend either Redwood or Silverado. And as space is available, could attend middle school on the current River Campus. Next slide, please. We recognize that the respectful closing of a school community requires careful and attention intentional planning. During the summer of 2021, planning for how to support students, staff and families. During this full school year of transition would begin. Concurrently, phase two of the redesign process focused on programmatic decisions would also begin. This work would be completed in time for open enrollment in November. So families would be able to make informed decisions regarding middle school options during the 2022, 2023 school year. We also recognize that a school closure will result in the joining and building of new school communities at the remaining schools. During the winter and spring of 2022, transition and inclusion activities would occur. To ensure that families and students feel welcome and included at their new school sites. Next slide, please. The focus of the phase two of the middle school redesign would be on developing middle school programs of excellence. At all of our middle schools. One of the elements of effective middle school programming is the creation of small learning communities. Or teaming to create a sense of community and belonging. Currently, River, Silverado and Redwood have components of teaming for some or all of their students. A goal for the next step in the redesign process would be to enhance these small learning communities. This, the small learning community efforts to better support students at the middle school level. During the redesign process, we have heard the importance of having a strong social emotional learning. Or SEL as it's known program at the middle school level. Currently, some social emotional learning happens during advisory time offered in some format at some of our middle schools. During phase two, we will assess the current strengths and areas of growth. In regards to SEL at our middle schools to create a program that will improve the social and emotional skills of all of our students. Additionally, we will look at ways to expand academic differentiation. Through the possible creation of advanced math pathways, increased English learner services. And before and after school learning opportunities at all of our middle schools. Next slide, please. We would also identify sustainable visual and performing arts and STEM pathways. That would better prepare students to participate in our strong and highly regarded high school VAPA and STEM programs. As many know from their own experience, students often find their place of belonging in these programs. Which support them through the middle and high school years. Next slide, please. Lastly, if the recommendation is adopted, the work of defining and developing the middle school language academy will advance. Decisions, decisions regarding the program's structure and design will be made to create a high quality. School-wide and K-12 articulated dual language program that fully celebrates bilingualism, bilinguism and biculturalism. Now Assistant Superintendent Page will discuss the next steps in terms of staffing and logistics.
Thank you. Our staffing process always follows three key drivers. The first is the instructional needs of the school's program. This is especially important at middle school and high school. Where most teachers hold single subject credentials, authorizing them to teach specific subject matter. Like math, science, social studies, etc. In considering staff for a language academy with dual immersion, it will be necessary to know how many. And which subjects will be taught in English or Spanish. The second driver is student enrollment. Enrollment determines the number of sections the school needs in each subject matter. The number of sections determines the number of teachers. Finally, when it comes to staffing, we have contractual agreements with our teachers' union and our classified staff union, which we need to follow. But over the years, when we have closed or consolidated schools, such as the consolidation of Salvador and El Centro Elementary Schools into Willow. And the more recent closures of Mount George and Yountville Elementaries. We also negotiated agreements with NVEA to reflect the unique circumstances of the situation. And collectively determine the fairest way to staff the school to meet instructional needs of students and preserve the rights of employees. One final note on staffing, with the amount of planning that is necessary for a new school. It is prudent to identify a principal who can serve as a point person and a decision maker over the next year. We believe we have the talent among current administrators. So we can appoint that person as soon as possible without taking them from their current position. Until the official opening of the school in the 2022, 23 school year. But by identifying that person early, they can participate in all the decision making and design. That needs to happen so we can hit the ground running and be successful. Next slide. In our final meeting with the task force, after we determined which scenario to recommend. The task force helped illuminate the considerations that would have to be made as a result of closure. For both a smooth transition and the ongoing success of students and families. Ms. Andree Jennings has already shared some of the instructional aspects to consider. The task force also highlighted logistical issues in four main areas. The first was transportation, not only getting to school and back. But also how to ensure access to before school and after school programs and special events. So students all have access to everything those who do not ride the bus can access. The second and third items are related. The task force identified a need to get the information out to the public about middle school opportunities. Dual language immersion opportunities specifically and open enrollment in general. They suggested stronger outreach to families who may not already know about the open enrollment process. To make sure options are accessed equitably for all families. The committee was concerned about filling all of the seats at the new language academy and felt a concerted marketing effort was necessary. Finally, with the closure of Harvest Middle School, enrollment boundaries have to be redrawn thoughtfully. Taking into account location of residences and likely patterns of transit. River Middle School is currently already 100% open enrolled, so boundary revisions do not apply. Next slide. We are currently addressing the profound decline in enrollment in middle schools that has finally worked its way up from elementary schools. Sadly, the elementary decline continues and therefore remains an area of ongoing concern. We have to analyze where we are and what makes sense for the future to address the discouraging demographic data presented earlier by Mr. Murray. At the same time, we pledge to explore new opportunities to do some things differently. One idea which emerged through the town halls and public comment is a K-8 model at some elementary sites. As a next step, we will form a committee to study such options, including a possible K-8 pilot. Next slide. Thank you, and I will turn it back over to Dr. Masetti.
Great, thank you, Ms. Page. Um, so I'll be brief on this slide. This is a ways away for us when we're at the point that we are right now. In the consideration of a school closure and or consolidation. But I just want to let everybody know that, um, once the board makes the decision, clearly we still have next year, right? So just to reiterate what Ms. Page and Ms. Andree Jennings shared. Um, students would stay status quo in their schools, um, next year. That means our students at Harvest would continue for the 21, 22 school year. Um, given the recommended, the, the portion of the recommendation around the harvest closure. Um, for 22, 23, at that moment in time, we can start to explore the possibilities around property disposition. We know that it's a large parcel, it's approximately, um, a 16 acre parcel at the harvest site. And so, um, what we do in the school district when it comes time for property disposition is we erect a, what's known as a 7-Eleven committee. Uh, the reason for 7-Eleven is that it has to have a minimum of seven members on the committee and a maximum of 11. It has to have a particular composition. Um, yeah, as laid out in the code. And we will, uh, form a 7-Eleven committee, you know, we're in the midst of sort of that work with some of the other properties where, where. That the district is going to be working on disposing in the next year or two. And then Harvest would, you know, sort of get that Harvest property would get in the queue for the disposition. What I want to speak to tonight, which also emerged through the task force, um, in terms of concerns and understanding that. Um, you know, the, the location of Harvest School is a hub in the South Napa community and I want to. You know, speak to the fact that we, my team, I, and we're going to ask the board to sort of recognize that. And we know that there's a lot of recreational activities, there's a lot of community-based activities that happen there. And the district has an interest of being very mindful in the property disposition process. To retain some, uh, element of that property. And you know, it's so early to sort of speak to this because it's a ways away, it's a lengthy process. But the intention is that, you know, we would engage immediately in conversations, for example, you see there the logo of our city, the city of Napa. To start discussions on what would be some possibilities for at least a portion of that property to remain as a. Um, uh, uh, in service to the community, in service to, to the community. Um, and the neighborhood there, um, in that area of the city. So we have that intent, it's, it's a ways away because it'll require the property being vacated and then engaging in those initial discussions. Um, but we're very, very mindful. And so, you know, we look, we're very excited about, you know, the opportunity that this may present despite the difficulty of the closure. Um, we, you know, we want to recognize, we know there's recreational activities, we know we have a track there, we know we have a playground, Fantastico that. Is, um, adjacent. And so, you know, we're, we're very, very dedicated to that. So if the board has any questions about that. Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala of Business Services will be able to answer some questions as well. So with that, um, that concludes our presentation. So any questions from the board before we go to public comment?
So at this stage, um, as I mentioned, any clarification questions in regards to the presentations? And then after a public comment, I will ask for you to make. Um, and we'll have a discussion at that point and, um, any further public comments, so questions?
I do have a quick question. My question is for, uh, Pat Andree Jennings. Um, we had a presentation approximately a month ago at the board meeting. Uh, where we discussed some of the problems with the DLI program, both, uh, performance-based and attrition-based. I wanted to know how would a DLI language academy help address these issues?
Thank you, Trustee Gracia. Um, I think one of the things, uh, when we think about the current, uh, structure of our K-12 alignment. Is that, um, we go from a school-wide of, uh, program at the elementary level. To the middle school and high school, there's a strand. Um, and currently the, the middle school strand, um, the students involved in dual language are represent. Less than half of the students enrolled at Harvest School. So the ability to sort of, um. Uh, so that's, that's one of the things. And so a dual, uh, uh, language academy would be have a school-wide focus. You'd be able to build a community focused on, um, everyone on the campus working toward, uh, bilingualism and bilinguism. And they would have a, that common goal and, um, would represent, uh, uh, that in, in their activities and curriculum. And all the other components of programming. Um, I think that also will help a little bit of the, uh, attrition that happens from the, the elementary, from going from a school-wide program to a strand at a school. Um, you know, parents invest in the elementary knowing that it's a six, you know, it's a, it's meant to be a, you know, a, a 12-year commitment and, um. Um, this would strengthen that, um, they can, you know, participate in a program that's school-wide at the middle school years.
Pat, is that the, um, are those the main differences then between the existing dual immersion program and that of a language academy?
Yes, and, and you know, I, I, I don't want to, um, Harvest has done, the students, the staff at Harvest has done a remarkable job of. Of providing services to the students who are in the dual language program. The difference would be that the, the, the school's sole focus would be on supporting every student towards bilinguism. And that's a huge difference when, when you have a singular focus as a school, you can really sort of gather around and make sure that everything that you do. Supports that as well.
Um, I have one other question. How will we address English learner students who might not have access? To VAPA or STEM or other enrichment opportunities due to their schedules?
That is, uh, something that, I mean, that's a, a, a question for all of our middle schools, not just students who might be in the language academy. And so that is something that will be part of the phase two, uh, design redesign process for middle schools. Those kind of programming decisions, um, and sort of looking creatively of how we can address that would be part of phase two.
And then I have just one last question. Um, Pat, I don't think this is for you, but I have, uh, received many inquiries regarding the public use of facilities at Harvest. Like Dr. Masetti referenced, can we ensure that there is a forum for community input as we move in that direction?
Mr. Manguala, can you address that?
Yes, I can. So absolutely. So as a part of the 7-Eleven process, we're, we're committed to have a very robust. Uh, process for a community input. We understand that that property is centrally located in the town of Napa and there are lots of different, uh, potential uses for where the community would have an interest.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Eve.
Thanks. Um, back to the DLI relocation to the, um, to the current River Campus. I'm hearing a lot of concerns about the potential for sort of unintended negative repercussions of relocating that program. Out of the Southwest Napa area. So I'm wondering, Ms. Andrew Jennings, if you can speak to sort of, um, what you're hearing from the DLI community of learners and their families. And what, what gives you confidence that the DLI program can thrive at that new location? In particular, in retaining and attracting the Latinx families to stay with the program.
Um, some of the data we shared with the task force, I believe it was, um, between, uh, sessions five and six. Showed that many of our Latinx families actually already commute to Pueblo Vista and NVLA to access that program. Um, and so I'm pretty confident that they would continue to commute, um, to, um. The, the River Campus, um, to access, uh, you know, a high-quality, you know, uh, dual language program. So I think that that's, that's part of it. And, um, I know that one of the things that Assistant Superintendent Page, uh, referenced was. Looking at providing transportation for families that might have a, a challenge with that, that were impacted by school closures, by the school closure.
And I'd just like to add there that, um, Mr. Pearson's here, if we need any additional information around transportation. So we are, um, working right now on kind of the potential of the transportation services landscape. You know, if all the students that were residential students in the current Harvest area. Uh, assessing the number of routes that we would need to add and the cost of that. Yes.
I do have a question for Mr. Pearson. Mr. Pearson, will you please clarify the differences between the modernization program plan study and the school facility good repair status? There seems to be some confusion as to how the fit assessment works and its relevance to the MPP.
Okay, yes, thanks, Trustee Jankowicz. So the, let me start with the modernization program plan study. So this was a, a study that was commissioned. Uh, and, uh, by the, by the, uh, school board to have done on all of our school sites. And we hired consultants and experts, uh, out there to provide us with an in-depth study, uh, of all of our school sites. Um, uh, not, not the brand new ones, but, but all the other school sites out there. Um, and these experts included mechanical engineers. And these experts included mechanical engineers, electrical engineers, and architects who thoroughly walked and inspected the sites, reviewed old architect drawings, and did an extensive, extensive comprehensive review of our building conditions and all of our life expectancies and replacement costs that would occur. Should we, you know, if we need to do what, excuse me, detailing what we needed to do in regards to the Modernization Program Plan Study. The FIT assessment is an outcome of the Williams Act out of 2004 of the lawsuit. And the, what the, what the FIT assessment is, is we, you're identifying is the facility in good repair. It is a visual inspection only. It is done once a year and it is literally a visual inspection. Staff goes in and, and goes through the entire campuses at all the school sites in MBSD and evaluates using certain criteria, what the, is, is the facility in good repair. And so it is a completely different assessment. As I said, it's a visual assessment. You walk into a room. For example, you turn on the light switch, are all the, are all the lights operating? If they're not, then there's a, you know, then you give it a ranking. If there's not a light, a light cover over the switch, then that's another issue. So it's, it's strictly a visual assessment and it's not going in-depth as well as, as, as did the Modernization Program Plan Study. And it does not involve experts like mechanical, electrical, and, and architects. It is MBSD staff who goes through these, each, each of our school sites and they assess the buildings for, in 15 system categories throughout the, throughout the study, excuse me, without the assessment. And then it is linked into the, the SARC that are approved annually by the Board of Education. That answer your question, Trustee Jankowicz?
Thank you. Trustee Water or Dr. Musetti?
No, that's fine. Go ahead. I'll, I'll speak next.
Well, this one, this one dovetails onto what Trustee Jankowicz said. Mr. Pearson, could you give me a comparison of the costs of bringing the, the three big middle schools up to decent repair? Which one would cost the most? Would Harvest cost more to repair than River School, excuse me, Redwood Middle School? Would Silverado cost more to repair than Harvest, et cetera?
So Trustee Water, they're, they're all fairly comparable. If we, if we take just the Modernization Program Plan Study that was conducted recently, it would cost in the neighborhood for Harvest Middle School of a little over $22 million. And these are short-term needs. These are current through the year 2024. At Redwood Middle School, it would be a little over $21 million. Again, short-term needs, current through 2024. And Silverado Middle School is a little over $20 million. Again, current through year 2024. And these are, you know, items that we've talked about in the past. We characterize as warm, safe, and dry, but it's addressing roofing, paint, some of the, some hardware, our HVAC units, and then, and then any kind of site access that needs to be improved through ADA accessibility and things like that. And there's more to it, but that's essentially the, the, the main components of that.
Can I piggyback onto that and then just because we're in the same straight? Then can you explain to me the original intent of the Measure H dollars and, and kind of the allocation of how those funds were spent? Was, there's been a lot of comment about Harvest not receiving an allocation of funds that were outlined in the original bond measure language. Can you speak to that, the implementation plan that was adopted in 2018 and what was and wasn't addressed in that phase one?
Yes, Trustee Jankowicz. So we kind of have, we have to go backwards, actually. The district had been looking, working on what we call a facilities master plan. And that master plan, the genesis was, what I've been able to find is it goes back to at least 2015. It may have even gone to 2014. From what, from, but that's, again, I don't quote me on that, but I knew I can get, I can go back to 2015. From that facilities master plan, it was a work by typically, this kind of work is done with an architect with the coordination of, of MBSD staff. And they outline how to improve the, each one of the school campuses. And so there's a, there's a document that exists that the board approved. It's the Facilities Master Plan Study. And outlines how MBSD would like to improve all of our school sites at that point back roughly in 2016 that was adopted. That particular document was then used, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, it was used for then to, as the school was out campaigning for a school bond. And that school bond then was done in June of 2016 for, and it did, it narrowly passed. Once the school bond was passed, then the school district got to work on some projects. There was not an implementation plan brought to the school board though, until approximately, hang in there just a second. There's actually was a, it was on May 3rd, there was a special study session in the year 2018 to give an update on the facilities master plan, well, on the Measure H. And at that point, the, the staff at that time gave an update of what was, what had been accomplished to date. And there were some seismic safety repair that occurred at West Park, Valley Oak, and Snow, and Snow Elementary School. There was some technology work that had done. There had been some construction of the phase one of Willow Elementary School at El Centro. And then there had been some renovation upgrades at Shear Elementary School on an emergency repair on HVAC. And then we had started some of the process on the finishing kitchens and at both the, at the elementary schools and the middle schools. Then they commented on the work in progress. And then they outlined, again, more around seismic safety and repair, technology, construction, renovation and upgrades, and, and the health and nutrition area. Following that, then a measure, then an implementation plan was adopted. And this was in June, I believe it was June 14th of 2018. Let me double check that. Yep, June 14th of 2018. And at that point, the $269 million of Measure H had been, had, had been allocated amongst the following areas. It had been allocated for the Willow Elementary School, the River Charter School, the American Canyon Middle School Number Two, Snow Elementary School, Napa Junction Elementary School. There was some money put aside for Stow Bridge Charter School, Valley Oak High School, West Park High, Elementary School, Shear Elementary School, Mount George. And there was another line item for school safety, which was security fencing. Then the health and nutrition, which was a central kitchen and the finishing kitchens. There was also money allocated for technology. And then the capital, there was a, a line item for capital improvement district-wide, which totaled all up to the $269 million. So to get to your point, Trustee Jankowicz, is at that moment in time, that the money, even though we had a facilities master plan out there, and that facilities master plan was used as part of the campaign for Measure H, many school, school sites were not going to get everything that was promised in that particular Measure H. Or excuse me, that particular facilities master plan that was used in the campaign. Have all the school sites received some Measure H money? Yes, they have. But what was in that, in the facilities master plan? Would they receive all of those items that were on there? The answer is noted that they, they hadn't, they wouldn't, they harvested not, and many other schools in MBSD have not either and will not either. But again, I do want to emphasize, all school sites have been touched in one way, shape, or form by the Measure H.
While we're on facilities and property, I just want to clear it up for the record because I just checked my notes. And so when I talked about property disposition, I, I mistakenly, so I apologize for the error, cut the parcel almost in half. So the parcel is actually 29 acres. So my apologies for the, I think I said 16 acres. But I just want to, I want to clear that up for the record and I apologize for the error.
I just wanted to add in as a reminder to the community that's listening that a lot of the Measure H funding went to the, fund the one-to-one technology provision, that that decision was made ahead of time before we knew that COVID was going to change school and life for all of us. And that, that really positioned us to be as successful as we have been during the school year. So that was a big chunk of the Measure H money as well. That we can't forget that those Chromebooks that all of your kids are doing their school on are courtesy of Measure H bond money.
That is an excellent point.
So I, switching gears, I did have one more sort of programmatic question or clarification really for Ms. Andrew Jennings again. You touched on this a little bit in your presentation, but I'm wondering if you can just expand a little bit. I've heard a lot of community members reaching out to us with concern about the, the River School program and model being the, the only place that certain kids of, you know, a certain, I, I don't know how to describe it, but they, you know, parents themselves have identified as, you know, my kids that don't fit in other places or, you know, the quirky kids, or there's different ways to say it. That does not go for all Rivers, River School students. But I know that it has been, it has attracted families of students who maybe felt that they would not fit in in a larger traditional middle school. And it's really surfaced that, that concern. And we really, as a board and as a school district, want all of our middle school students to feel safe and at home and welcomed and confident to be who they are at whatever district school they attend. And so there's a lot of emphasis on the social emotional learning component at River School. And I want to say as a sidebar that they really were ahead of the curve in emphasizing social emotional learning and project-based learning when they started as a charter. And really, our, our hope is, we, we want all Napa students to benefit from those important learning components of the program. So I'm wondering, Ms. Andrew Jennings, if you can elaborate a little bit, I know you can't get into programmatic specifics because phase two is the programmatic redesign. But can you speak a little bit to a more about the, the commitment of the district to provide that social emotional learning and safe space feeling to, at, at all of our middle schools?
Yes, I did. I mean, I did touch on it a little bit around the, one, I, I just know from my own experience as a mom and having my student go from a elementary school of about 400 to a middle school, about 1100, of having concerns around what that experience is going to be like for him. And I, and we do have a commitment to make sure that there are either small learning communities that are developed at the middle schools, which means that, or, or teaming where a small group of students is shared by a core group of teachers. That currently does happen at Silverado and at Redwood. They do core, they're sixth grade. Just to kind of give parents some sense of comfort and safety, like they would meet the four teachers that their child was going to have at the middle school level for the core subjects. So that is something that we can look at as we develop the middle school, as we look at redesigning the middle school program and the, all of our middle schools. The other thing is the social emotional learning component or the advisory, which I, we heard quite a bit about and how important that was to families. And especially as we all remember our middle school years and all of the challenges that we faced. And so there are quite, there's some excellent curriculum around giving students social emotional skills and sort of how to get through challenging experiences. And we want to bring that to every school, middle school in Napa and create this place and space for that. Some schools and some of the middle schools do an advisory, not necessarily an advisory period where a student has, but some time each week that's given for advisory time, where some of the social emotional learning is, is happening. Some schools like River, I know, had, you know, daily advisory time and where there was community building going on. We know that that's a need at our middle school level and our, our sites have done a remarkable job of sort of trying to create that place and space for students to have that sense of belonging because that's all that middle school is about is, is belonging. And so wanting to do that, there will still be a, a smallish school option in terms of the Language Academy having approximately 600 students. That currently is not that different in size from our current, like, current school of Harvest. Or Silverado and Redwood are a little larger. So they will, there still will be that option. And then as Assistant Superintendent Page mentioned, we will be exploring some K-8 options that could be that place for students who, you know, might need a smaller learning environment than a traditional middle school experience.
Pat, are we going to try and keep those, you know, small learning communities, communities, the teaming, are we going to keep those programs consistent amongst the schools?
The, the goal is to have some consistency. We talk a lot about coherence and alignment in our system, right? And so we also want schools to have an opportunity to add sort of their own flavor or twist to things. But the idea would be to have, it's similar in terms of having a time that's dedicated to social emotional learning and having a, and having a focus on community building and, you know, school culture and climate. So that would be the similar piece. How schools do that might be a little different. As we go through the redesign process, the middle school, one of the things we could look at is sort of those signature student experiences that students would have. Like at sixth grade, what are some signature student experiences that we want all sixth grades to have at Redwood or Silverado? What are some signature student experiences we could have at, you know, seventh or eighth grade? And that could be part of the redesign process. So we could have those options for, for schools.
Thank you.
And Pat, that would be those sort of social emotional learning programs or, or, I shouldn't say programs, but kind of systems would be also applicable at the smaller, the, the DLI or the Language Academy school. We're not just talking about the big schools. We're talking about district-wide for all students at the, the middle school level, right?
Exactly. When I say middle schools, I'm, it's like all middle schools, you know, that that's our goal is to have like, what Trustee Jank, Jankowitz asked, like, the similarity between that. And part of it is this, like, having the structure, like, the place and space for it. And how that piece be similar at schools and how they do it might look a little different. And then also having a curriculum that is research-based, that can be used and implemented at every, at every school as well.
Go ahead, Trustee Chu.
So I, first, I want to thank all of the task force members. That is a lot of work that you all have done. Thank you very much for digging into all of that data and asking for more information. Because I think that really helps us on the board understand a little better. And also, thank you to all the people who have contacted us either through email or talked to us in person. You know, I, it, during a pandemic, when we don't get to see people, it's really great to have that connection. So I wanted to ask for clarification because I'm talking about all the input that we have from the community. And one of the scenarios that I didn't see kind of brought to the table was the idea of closing the River Middle School Campus, bringing New Tech High School over to the River Campus. And then closing down the downtown New Tech High School Campus. So I don't know who, who would be the most appropriate person to kind of give us an idea of what cost savings would that give to the district? And is that even on par with closing a comprehensive middle school?
Trustee Chu, it's not closing.
Sorry, not repurposing River Campus for New Tech.
Right, not closing the River Campus.
Closing the.
Yep, the repurposing of the campus.
Repurposing, sorry.
And so in, in that scenario, you would only save the cost of running the smaller middle school. And so the cost of running the smaller middle school, Mr. Manguala, it was one, 1.2, between one and 1.2 million, I believe.
That sounds about right, Dr. Musetti.
Yes. So in that scenario, you're, you're, you're only capturing the cost savings of running the smaller middle school. The other concern with that scenario is that New Tech, the capacity at the current campus on Salvador, at Salvador, the River School is approximately 600. And the New Tech enrollment is, help me out, Mr. Manguala, I want to say under 400, right?
Correct, it's under 400 right now. And so I don't know if that's a viable solution. There's, there's other building challenges that, that school was built primarily to support the program there at the high school. So switching one middle school to a high school, it would be similar to switching an elementary to a middle. There's, there's definitely some programmatic challenges there. The, the classroom base is, is very different. Mr. Pearson, could you talk about the design at New Tech there, the way the classrooms are built? Because like, recall, right, they're, they're double-sized rooms that kind of match the way they say program at that site. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Manguala. That, that is correct. So New Tech High School, which is the flagship school for the New Tech network and
So New Tech High School, which is the flagship school for the New Tech Network and serves as the model for all New Tech schools throughout the entire nation, is, it was was definitely built to to satisfy the programmatic needs of that particular high school, which is project-based learning. And so in project-based learning, there are classes that that are, there are classrooms there that allow for the flexibility for two subjects to to be, and two teachers and two classrooms of students to be inside a particular classroom to collaborate interdisciplinary on certain, on certain subjects. So if you have math and social, excuse me, English and social studies or math and science, you have that opportunity to have that interdisciplinary work happening through a project-based learning lens. And again, as a, as it was noted earlier, that that particular school site, it was designed to serve that programmatic need. And as I said earlier, too, it is the flagship high school for the New Tech Network and the New Tech High School models throughout the entire nation.
I would just emphasize that the two key issues is the underutilization that you would have. So we would be creating a scenario where there would be massive underutilization. In addition to what Mr. Mangual and Mr. Pearson have added, we would have intense underutilization of the new River facility. Right, with an enrollment of four hundred with but a capacity of six hundred. And then you, the 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 operational annual cost savings of just saving the cost of running the smaller middle school only saves approximately one to one point two million annually. Whereas closing a comprehensive middle school saves approximately two to two point two million annually.
Okay, thank you. My second and last question is, I know, so I'm going to say that this middle school redesign task force for me is actually part two. Because we had, well, the previous board had to cancel American Canyon Middle School number two. Of course, it was very devastating to us in American Canyon because we do have the largest middle school. They've, the staff there is wonderful. They've made it work. Our scores are, you know, pretty good, could be better. But, you know, that's part of the the redesign task force phase two, I hope. But I do know that a lot of parents would like to know whether they have a voice in any of the redesign Phase Two work. And I understand that a lot of the curriculum, I think, has to come from the teachers because by Ed Code, they have to hit certain standards. So I don't, I'm not talking about that. But in terms of like what kind of VAPA programs, what kind of STEM programs, that the direction of those, are parents going to be surveyed to get an idea of what it is that the community would like? And this can also help, you know, identify the the special interests of each each middle school.
Do you want to answer that, Ms. Andrew Jennings?
Yeah, I can respond to that. Thank you, trustee two. Yes, I think, you know, all of our community stakeholders would be part of that sort of redesign process through surveys or focus groups. As we, the, our timeline is pretty short because we do need to have whatever the the redesign results are in time for open enrollment in November. And so that is, you know, one of the things that we would definitely factor into is is getting feedback and input from our parents and community around the the needs.
Okay, thank you.
And just sort of on that note, um, community engagement, if I may, trustee Julie, and then your comment next. Dr. Mercedes or Ms. Dana Page, if you could just highlight the type of community engagement we have done throughout the process, especially as we reach out to our Spanish-speaking population and Latinas and the kind of participation we have seen throughout, which I think, you know, as mentioned by trustee two, you know, we're, we're all in doing this virtually, right? I think there's a different kind of sense of of feeling when we're in the boardroom and you can see the volume and the people around you. So I just wanted to have you just highlight a little bit of what that's been like.
I think Ms. Page may have mentioned this. Did you mention the community town halls, Ms. Page?
She did.
Uh, yeah, I did talk about the community town halls, but if you want to go into a little more detail, I mentioned that we we held them and kind of the timing of those input sessions so that the task force could participate and hear what people had to say. But if you'd like to talk a little more about what what we heard and how how communities.
The number of that participated.
Yeah, absolutely. So for our English night, we had, I think we were shy of four hundred, a little under four hundred. And for our Spanish-speaking night, we were approximately two hundred participants. So our families definitely did show up in the town hall space. I do not have the notes right now in terms of the number of people that commented at each one. But I would just say at both of those, we had a high degree of engagement. And I think many of the board members watched both those evenings. We did, yeah, we did go beyond the the intended end time.
Absolutely. And I think and we were to add up all of our emails and one-on-one conversations. It's been in the hundreds.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, wanted to highlight just the kind of engagement which we absolutely appreciate from our, from our, from our community. Because I think to me, this has been actually quite a process that has created different venues and opportunities to do that. And and that has given us a breadth of knowledge that reflects the community as we 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 see and and process all the information given to us.
There was also, I just would mention another number, and the task force members received through the special email address that was set up, received over sixty-five emails as well. So they kind of got a taste of, you know, the the amount of emails that that you all received. But they were, all those emails were forwarded, so they had all that information and a comment is from from the public in that way as well.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Trustee Julie?
Yes, so I have a couple of questions. One has to do with the the, Dr. Mercedes mentioned the the underutilization of the the Salvador campus in a New Tech context. With respect to the DLI, you know, right now, we have about three hundred DLI students enrolled. It's just under three hundred middle school-aged DLI students. And it, you know, based on kind of projected enrollment in DLI, I'm sorry, in current enrollment in the DLI elementary schools, the kind of highest level of enrollment of a, in a three-year span, which eventually would get to middle school, is about five hundred students. So I guess the 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 question would be, how are we? What is the 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 draw for filling those other seats? You know, in the early years, it could be half the school. You know, is that, how are we focusing or how are we addressing filling the the remaining seats at the Salvador campus?
Um, I I think your three hundred number might be a little low. I don't know if you're including the, is that with the sixth graders from MBLA?
Yeah, so that's from the, the, this is from the task force presentation and includes the sixth grade at MBLA.
Okay, you've got, I just want to make sure you had the sixth grade from MBLA. Ms. Andrew Jennings, do you want to answer that in terms of programmatically, some of the things that we might do? And the the additional seats in order to ensure that we're not underutilizing the campus initially while DLI numbers might still be slightly below the facility capacity?
Um, yes, thank you, trustee Julie. Once a decision is made, then part of our sort of work for Phase Two is looking at what the structure and and design of the Language Academy would be. And then what the transition plan would be to make sure that the all six hundred seats at that school would be filled. So that would be part of the Phase Two sort of programming decisions and and how the 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 remaining parts of the the school would be filled when you consider the the current DLI students. And as you look through, you know, the younger grades and you get to kindergarten, you can see that those those class cohorts are around a hundred each at Pueblo Vista and a hundred or a hundred at Pueblo Vista, a hundred at MBLA. And so you would get to the point where you would have full capacity. But in those transition years, part of our programming work would be looking at how would we fill the remaining of those seats? And what makes sense in terms of of that? But the goal is to have those spaces be utilized and students would be able to access that.
Just so that the trustees are aware, we just recently added a fourth kindergarten at Pueblo Vista because of the high demand. And so currently now, MBLA and Pueblo Vista are parallel in terms of the kindergartens that they have. So those larger cohorts are coming through. As the Rob Murray presentation shows, there's high demand for the programs. There's lots of migration into both of those schools. Both of them are approximately eighty percent open enrolled, only have approximately twenty percent students that live in in resident boundary. So we know that the DLI families are traveling, mostly traveling for the program. The significant majority of them are. So those larger cohorts will be coming through with the expansion. If sixth grade is no longer at MBLA, if the board were to approve the Language Academy model at the Salvador, the River Campus on Salvador, then we would be able to consider, you know, some further expansion because there'll be room there without sixth grades on the campus.
And so, you know, that that kind of shows even with an overall declining enrollment environment, there's almost expanding enrollment in these, in this particular program. I mean, the concern, I guess, is that if we are declining by a couple thousand students in the next seven years or so, what, you know, can we keep these numbers up at at this school? And, you know, obviously, that's a challenge for all our schools and not just this one. But I think the the idea of creating this a a focused and robust program on this campus would be a draw and and something that it continued to be a draw toward the DLI program.
Yeah, we have evidence year after year that the DLI programs are absolutely in high demand at the two flagship elementary schools that we have, MBLA and PV. I think Ms. Dana Page included in her slides that, you know, that this is where the discussion comes around. Unfortunately, because of the dramatic declining enrollment, potential further consolidation and closure at the elementary level. And as you continue to address and right-size in response to the declining enrollment trends, then to some extent, despite the hemorrhaging of of enrollment that's happening in the background, you know, you can, you can continue to protect the high-demand programs in that way, right? Because we're not spreading enrollment options too thin.
Um, kind of as a follow-up on that, have we looked at, you know, any potential kind of compounding of declining enrollment for for, you know, as a result of this decision? I know it's it's a maybe a temporary thing, just, but but is there, is there a way to look at that or have we done so?
Pounding, can you, can you elaborate a little bit, compounding?
Meaning as a, in response to or as a result of this decision, having an increased level of declining enrollment.
Oh, people leaving the district because of some of the decisions? Is there a way that we can address that or project that? Is that, is that more the question?
Yeah, I think it's more project, understanding the 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 consequences of the decision, I guess. I I I, we can't control people, but we, you know, are we factoring in the the possibility of that happening?
No, right now, in the numbers that we've presented and the projections, there's no anticipation of departure to other school systems or private schools or online charter schools, no. That's, that's not currently within our numbers.
Dr. Mercedes, if I, if I could say something right here, so.
Please do.
In in terms of looking at our enrollment projections from after we closed Mount George in Yountville, I I do not see any impact there. So the the enrollment projections that we received from Mr. Murray that we saw earlier tonight, I'm not aware of any adjustment downward as a result of that decision to to close two schools.
Thank you. I just was curious. The 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 last thing I kind of wanted to address is more of a short-term impact. And and it was, I think, brought up briefly in in terms of, you know, addressing, let's see, the the kind of logistical considerations. It's not a logistical consideration, but it it has to do with the this is a hard, this is a hard thing for people to experience. It's a hard, you know, decision for us to make, but it'll be a hard reality for families, for students who, you know, will have to change schools. And I was wondering if there will be a a way of addressing the the trauma. Oh, that reminds me, where where we talked about it briefly was in looking at kind of rebuilding or building new communities. And in that context, are we, you know, I'm, I'm hoping we will be looking at addressing trauma. You know, a lot of people who have written in have raised the fact that the students today have already experienced more trauma than than I did in my K twelve years combined. And so I, you know, I think having, having it that be a focus during this, the the transition process would be an important way of of recognizing both the external trauma and the trauma that would result from from this decision.
Absolutely. Healing and and a focus on being responsive and doing trauma-informed work because of everything that we've, everyone's been gone through. And then, of course, these transitions at, you know, unfortunate times, right? It's, it's difficult to layer these things on top of the crisis that we've all been living in. But Ms. Pat, Andrew Jennings, do you want to speak a little bit to the work that your Student Services Department does around that?
Yes, and I, and I, I think I do want to acknowledge that we do represent, we do, I recognize that this would be, this is a loss. And it it has a tremendous impact on school communities. And so our social work, our our Student Services Team has done some like preliminary planning around how we can support the students and staff through this process initially. Once a decision, you know, is made and then throughout next year. That's why I included it in the slide presentation, just knowing, just wanting people to recognize that we we know that we need to be very intentional and purposeful and sort of helping people to sort of heal and and move forward and giving staff and staff and students an opportunity to respectfully close their school communities in a way that that honors the the school and then move forward, hopefully with, you know, an eye on the future and and, you know. So that's, that is the goal. And so we do, our Student Services Team has been thinking and working on some plans to support students and staff through this process.
I just was wondering, one last thing, and I think maybe this would be from Ms. Andrew Jennings. But in a lot of the community outreach I'm getting, people are saying, you know, we have more time, pump the brakes. Like we, why do we have to do this now at the end of this year? And I'm just wondering if you can reiterate for everyone listening, sort of why, even if it seems like we have quite a bit of time, why the timeline before us indicates that we need to have a, make a decision?
Um, yes, I can, I can do that. I mean, there's obviously no good time for a school closure. The reason why this is helpful to do it in the spring. And actually, it allows us time to do the planning and program design for open enrollment. If we were to wait until the fall, it would not give us much opportunity to really be prepared to present to families what the options might be at the middle school in terms of redesign. So this this decision at this time allows for that. I also know that for some communities, this has been just, this has not been just, oh, just this one time during the the redesigned task force, but that since October, some communities have been in in turmoil and flux. And I don't know if it's any easier the longer you go through it. So I think in some ways, it's, it's helpful to 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 not have the uncertainty anymore.
Okay. Thank you all for clarifying questions. We will now, but before we go and move on to our public comment portion of tonight, we're going to take a quick break. And that's a five-minute break and we'll be right back. All right, we are reconvening. Thank you. All right, before we start with public comment, I will ask trustee Garcia to report any public comment that came through our email account.
Sure. Public comments were received via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org. These public comments received by electronic written format have been forwarded and reviewed by the NVUSD Board of Education trustees. I will now list the name, title, and date received of the 37 public comments received through the email. The first was Aaron Hooton, the board meeting River Middle School, and that was received for 1221. Keith, I'm going to go with Wechler, public comment, agenda item F1, presentation of the middle school demographic analysis, middle school redesign task force work, and middle school closure and consolidation recommendation and next steps for implementation discussion item received for 1221. Addison Daybyle, Napa Valley Middle School, maybe closing for 1221. Monica Addy, please add to board agenda, middle school redesign curriculum for 1321. Lori Oha, April 15th, 2021, public comment, received for 1321. Danielle Schmitz, April 15th, board meeting, closing of Harvest Middle School, received for 1321. Woodrow Banta, protect and preserve Harvest Middle School, received for 1421. Ginny Banta, save Harvest, don't close neighborhood schools, for 1421. I'm going to go with Annie Pretty, save Harvest Middle School for 1421. Caitlin Joski, keep Harvest Middle School open for 1421. Simone Katz O'Neil, Browns Valley Elementary School, TK through eight option for 1421. Richard Hall, middle school task force, keep River open for 1421. Leova Cortez, Salvare HMS slash save HMS for 1421. Rachel Hall, middle school task force for 1421. Laura Lewis, this public comment is for an agenda item for the April 15th meeting for 1421. Marybel Soriano Bravo, don't close Harvest Middle School for 1421. Ellen Patterson, agenda item, school closures for 1421. Betty Winholz, Harvest and River closures for 1421. Danielle Molinari, agenda item F dot one for 1421. Jessica Swan, keep Harvest open for 1421. Amy Diskin, River School Matters and Why for 1421. Jacqueline Cervantes Sejas, agenda item for 1421. Luke Myers, public comment for 415 Agenda for 1421. Tammy Buck, item on the agenda for 1421. Nancy Morales, oppose school closure for 1421. Catherine Fleming, public comment on agenda item F dot one for 1421. Jose Hernandez, Harvest Middle School for 1421. Julieta Mario, agenda item for April 15th, read out loud for 1421. Lori Corona, comment at tomorrow's meeting for 1421. Louis Alcazar, public comment for agenda item F dot one on April 15th, 2021, for 1521. Carolina Solis, a letter calling for direct action at NVUSD for 1521. Peter Molinari, agenda item F for 1521. Claire McConnell, agenda item for April 15th, meeting dash River Middle School closure discussion for 1521. Lisa Lombardi, NVUSD Board Special Meeting Agenda Item F1 for 1521. Mary Jamie O'Sullivan, an agenda item for April 15th for 1521. Inez Deluna, NCLDC, public comment for item F dot one for 1521. And Melanie Merker, my comment is for an agenda item for 1521.
Thank you, trustee. I just would like to dovetail on your clerk report out of what's been received. We also received the following public comment after the deadline. These public comments will be forwarded to the school board for review and will become part of the meeting archive. The senders were Itzel Mendez, Tess Buck, Catherine Kenzak, Stephanie Cole, Matthew Clancy.
Thank you, trustee Garcia and Dr. Misedi for that final update. We will now open up to public comments for those participating via Zoom or over the phone. Mr. Reese, can you please queue up the first public comment of the night?
Yes, President Gonzalez-Mares, we will start with Lisa Lombardi.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Lombardi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a parent of a fourth grader and second grader twins at Browns Valley Elementary School. I have a strong interest in the decisions being made this year with regards to our middle schools. I am also the parent club president. It's very sad to close a school and I can't imagine two schools. And I know the emotions are very high tonight. I appreciate everyone involved in the difficulty of the decision that will need to be made. It is great to see a K through eight model school as a programmatic consideration. In the fall of 2019, Browns Valley parents created a TK through eight committee because of overwhelming interest in transitioning to this model at our school. Making Browns Valley a TK through eight school is part of the solution and should be considered. We hope a successful TK eight model at Browns Valley will open the possibility for similar models at other elementary school campuses as a solution to the reality of ongoing declining enrollment. There has been great research done around the benefits to smaller school settings in early adolescence. Many parents in our Napa district agree that some students may not be developmentally ready to transition to a larger middle school, especially since the pandemic. We must provide educational opportunities and do what's best for all kids. Aside from the well-known positive research of K eight school environments, there are other benefits to opening a K eight school. Each year, Browns Valley loses approximately 12 to 15 students to private schools. That is a loss totaling 120,000 to 150,000 per year to Napa private schools. It is important for us to consider how we attract, retain, and reclaim families that are choosing between NVUSD and private schools. This solution would broaden the product base of NVUSD's offerings. We have strong leadership at Browns Valley and would be willing and excited to pilot this program this fall. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Next one, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Debbie Alter Star.
Oops, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, hi. My children have graduated from the district. I had two quirky children, one went to Harvest and one went to River. And I have a lot of experience with these topics of school closures. I was on a 7-Eleven in 2007. I'd been on the, it was a PAC, parent advisory committee, the superintendent through two superintendents, about eight years total. Another eight years on Napa Valley Education Foundation, years on PTAs and site councils. I was at PBA when that school was being closed and I explained to parents why. So anyway, I just want to run some creative other scenarios by you since I know how 7-Eleven's work. One idea I had because I am really concerned about the families that live around Harvest, that they are some of our most low-income families, some of them are farm workers, don't have transportation. So that's where my suggestions are coming from. I'm a very big proponent of immersion learning. My kids didn't go through that channel. They did, however, find exceptions so they could start Spanish in middle school and they completed AP Spanish Lit at Vintage. And they wish they had done immersion instead, starting at a younger age. So my suggestions include, what about if we close Redwood and move those students to the River campus? If the population's shrinking, then maybe that risk could be K eight, have NVLA there and incorporate the Pueblo Vista students there. I just want to make sure that there's room for Spanish immersion to grow. I think we should be doing a lot more of it. It's one of the greatest educational advantages that people have. My son learned Spanish, French, German, is now focused in Russia, Russian and living in Ukraine. So I think that these, these skills change lives. I, I'm a little concerned about students having to move to wealthy areas and how they're going to get there and that we cater to the more middle-class and affluent students. I appreciate the quirky students because I had to. And I think another option for them is cluster grouping. I've always been concerned that River doesn't represent our student demographics. So I, I hope that whatever you do, you support the families in the area of Harvest by having some community center and recreation, looking at closing Redwood and moving it to River instead. Okay, thank you very much. And it's a really hard job and you're looking at so many pieces of the puzzle and it, it's not easy to be in your shoes. No one wants their school closed. Thank you again and for the opportunity to speak to you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you for your comment. Next one, Mr. Reese.
Suzanne Doohay.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi. My name is Suzanne Doohay and I would like to speak about the possibility of adding the TK through eighth grade pilot program to Browns Valley Elementary. We have been part of Browns Valley for the past seven years and feel that the small, close-knit community is amazing. It's an amazing school experience and we feel that the possibility of extending activity grade would be opportunity that we would definitely get behind as parents. When we first heard that, it was, we were very excited. And our current plan is to enroll our son in a private school once he is ready for middle school. And if Browns Valley is converted to eighth grade, we will definitely be changing that plan and keeping him in Browns Valley. We feel Browns Valley is a special school and with a great community and great leadership.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Next one, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Derek Moore.
I am president of the Harvest Middle School Parent Faculty Club. I would like to begin this evening by expressing gratitude to the parents, children, and concerned community members who have shown support of our school, including dozens who turned out today to rally outside district offices. I also want to thank the trustees who met with me and another Harvest parent to hear our concerns for the future of our school as well as for the Southwest Napa community. From the start, NVUSD's approach to the middle school closure process has ignored or glossed over crucial contextual realities, including but not limited to impacts on health, employment, housing, and the economy. District leadership argues these considerations are outside their purview and that the only considerations we need taken to account are enrollment trends and finance. But of course, schools are much bigger than the sum of their parts. That's especially true of a school like Harvest, which is a true community center unlike any other middle school in Napa. Swing by the campus on almost any evening and you will find the blacktop, track, and ball fields packed with people, young and old, playing games, listening to music, catching up on news of the day, sharing work leads, or simply finding space to breathe outside of their cramped apartments and overburdened lives. NVUSD has options to ease its financial crisis other than closing Harvest that would result in greater cost savings, disrupt fewer lives, and maintain unique programming, including dual-language immersion in communities where it must remain in order to thrive. So why then is Harvest still a target? We hope it doesn't reflect political or career aspirations or Southwest Napa being viewed as the path of least resistance to achieve a desired end. Here's what we can say. In Southwest Napa, where the historic impacts of racism, violence, and defunding of public institutions are well-understood from experience and data and where today pandemic-related hardships, including job loss, illness, and death are only now coming to light, NVUSD seeks to retract the hand of help and hope. Good night.
Thank you for your comment. Next, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Kristen Gornick.
We don't hear anything, Mr. Reese.
Yes, President Gonzalez-Mares, she's, she's allowed, she's been permitted to speak, but she's not unmuting her mic.
Okay, Ms. Kristen Gormack. Can you hear us? All right, Mr. Reese, we will go over to the next comment if she's welcome to come back.
Okay, Becky and Brian Castillo.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for taking my comment. I was sitting today thinking about what it would be if I was on the school board and what I would be listening for. And one thing that I'm asking you to notice is the range of voices that you're hearing from. It's not one school. It's not one interest group. This, there is a concern for this topic to a wide range of residents with varied ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds. Because it's a city and county-wide issue, I'm asking that there be time to consider a reimagining of the district, not the one-by-one closures that are costly in time, energy, well-being, and of course, money. My contention is that two public input meetings from the task force at NVUSD to redesign middle schools is not an adequate community involvement. Additionally, California's been allocated over $15 billion from the American Rescue Plan Act. Those federal funds could be used to allow our school district and our community the time to be able to make a considered decision and redesign schools from TK to high school. I also request that the share of money that comes from those federal, federal funds and the spending of that money is publicly disclosed so that we are able to see how those are spent because they are specifically outlined, and I quote from the US Department of Ed. because they are specifically outlined, and I quote from the US Department of Ed, "to equitably expand opportunity for students who need it the most," end quote. Also, I looked up the goals of the NVUSD strategic plan. Number five, under 1A, which is equity-centered leadership and inclusive organizational culture, states, "Promote equity by increasing institutional access to historically underserved groups." Closing Harvest Middle School goes directly against this goal. I feel like our district could be flexible. Harvest could have the ability to take overflow from American Canyon's middle schools who are overcrowded. We have space to invite new students into the district. Why are parents choosing to go to alternative schools to NVUSD? Why are we having this attrition in middle schools? Are we addressing that problem? People who live in adjacent districts and work in the Napa Valley should be able to easily navigate transfers so they can enroll their students in NVUSD. I've heard firsthand that this is not an easy experience. I have one last question, which is, are the property dispositions of the past school closures and any income from those property dispositions incorporated into the NVUSD projected budget? Please consider these things and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next, Mr. Reese.
Hello?
We didn't hear you, Mr. Reese. Is Ms. Munoz next?
Sorry, yes. Go ahead, Ms. Munoz.
Okay, I think I'm on mute. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Yes, well, first, I've been listening to all the meetings the fourth task had with the district. I'm kind of disappointed or all disappointed because I don't think they represent the community that has been affected by the closing of Harvest. I know the persons or the people got picked either because their studies or the input they can have, but they not consider the hard workers, the ones that are being affected. Because I know some of the fourth task members, they don't even have kids at school. And the other thing is, I think some of the presentations that the district made about which is cool was more like the one that has more costs to fix. Like for example, they said they had to have a community center just to keep the Harvest students safe, dry, and warm. I think those amounts of money were really outrageous. The other thing is that I just want to answer to one of the board members or say something to him, the one that said that why if kids are leaving because of the district's choices to close the schools? Probably not at this point, but most of the people that I have talked to, they're looking into another schools because of this. So besides learning wrong because kids are leaving the district because either parents are jobs and high rates on rent, people start looking at another schools. And I think I made that comment before, while the district is looking into $2 million every year into their savings accounts, people is going to start looking, or parents are going to start looking for another schools outside the district. The other thing is I read on the newspaper a letter, I think you guys can see it, that says, "Stop this theft or steal from a neighborhood." And when I read that, it was saying something about just to support Harvest because they don't want people from Harvest on that side of Napa. They're thinking of, if we don't move to that side of Napa, if you don't move the students to that side of Napa, they're going to be safe. They're not going to have the students because they think the students are stealing their neighborhoods. So how are you guys going to deal with that? Because that's a big issue. Is that just a start from an adult? I mean, can you imagine when my kids go to that school or that side of the town? What are they going to go through? They're going to be threatening us thieves because the district decided to move them to that side of the town? Just might, you know, take that in consideration. And also, there is a lot of other issues that haven't been taken care of it. So that's it.
Thank you for your comment.
Frank Martinez.
Thank you for your time. My name is Beck Martinez. As a former Harvest Middle School counselor, I have a clear understanding of the phenomenal school is for the South Napa community. I connected with the community during my five years at Harvest. And as a Latino who grew up in a neighborhood similar to Harvest, I know the importance this school has to our Latino students in our neighborhood. It provides them the support necessary to thrive in their own neighborhood. It is because of this that it not only saddens me, but also angers me of the proposal to close Harvest and move the dual immersion the dual immersion program over to River Campus. The dual immersion program already worked amazingly in Harvest. It also sets me that our NVUSD leadership is using their educational mastery of language and position of power to misinform and attempt to persuade Latino parents of the DL program and their schools to not only move in favor of scenario G, but to actually meet and call them to personally change their mind, their Harvest is a bad school. For example, here's this testimony of a parent from a Pueblo Vista parent. To whom it may concern, on Tuesday, April 13th, I was present via Zoom in an ELEC meeting where Mrs. Roca expressed that Harvest Middle School did not have a strong DL program. I thought that parents who were present left the meeting very confused. Mrs. Roca met with us to get the support of New Language Academy, the rural River Middle School campus. I fear that is unprofessional to express dissuade of a program we know works and has been a huge success. When my son started Pueblo Vista, Mrs. Roca said HMS was a great school and that was a fee school for our kids when they would go off to middle school. HMS has a program for PVE and MVA kids that works and can become even stronger to have more students excel with learning both languages, which our staff at Harvest has done a phenomenal job. Their amazing and commitment work to not only first-generation low-income students has impacted them in so many ways. Thank you for your time. My apologies for getting emotional, but I do love Harvest and the community. Even though I'm not present there, I will always be a Napa member and a Harvest Hawk forever. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Maureen Thunison.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm just getting to my notes. Thank you, everyone, for this opportunity to speak. I'm a member of the River and Napa High Communities. Please reject the proposal to close Harvest and River. I stand in solidarity with Harvest. It is morally wrong to close a thriving campus that resides in one of our lowest-income neighborhoods. River's diversity has also been overstated and the fact that our program increased its diversity in two years was not shared, nor the roadblocks imposed by the district to increasing it. Less than two years ago, the administration publicly stated to us that it supported our 26-year social-emotional learning program and would remain a lottery-based school of choice for every student in the district, the gold standard for equitable admissions. We were led to believe that we were valued, that two decades of positive testimonials and overflowing waitlists demonstrated community support for the school. There was no scenario presented to preserve this program on a different campus and allow it to grow as intended. This has resulted in a loss of trust. The school culture is the primary reason families value it. We cannot stress enough that this culture, built from the ground up, is what promotes all the soft skills students learn, like advocating for themselves in their education, tolerance and empathy for other people, knowing how to fail and recover from those failures. This is only a partial list of skills kids learn and the administration is not measuring any of these things, so quantically, they were not presented. It should be noted, many other marginalized groups, such as LGBTQIA students, have found safe haven at our school. Our concern is that there has been no program vision presented. And by reneging on promises to River, you've lost the buy-in of many district families, even beyond River. Parents want to send their kids to a school with a known track record. You are asking families to take a risk and trust in some unknown program with no track record, no buy-in from teachers, and limited funds. Parents are not going to take risks with their children's educations. If it's the intention of the district that they want to bring SEL to other middle schools, then the smarter plan is to move River intact to a larger campus and allow it to grow. You can phase in SEL at the other middle school if they want it. It takes time to develop this culture. You already have it at River and parents trust it. Why abolish it? We have all seen top-down programs rolled out in Napa that end up being posters on a wall and not lived by the educators. Do not repeat these failures. This process was rushed and haphazard and didn't include nearly enough truly creative and thought-out solutions created in the spirit of consensus and compromise. Vote no. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Okay, Mike Wilmarth.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to the board, to the parents and teachers and other community members who are attending this evening. My name is Mike Wilmarth and I'd like to again share some thoughts regarding Redwood Middle School as they relate to the important work done by the redesign task force. Redwood Middle School has a longstanding commitment to teaming, something that's been a point brought up several times tonight. This commitment reshaped our school in 1982 and has been part of nearly every decision we've made for the last 40 years. Like all middle school teachers, we know that the middle-grade years can be challenging, both academically, emotionally, and socially. We know this can also be a time of great discovery if the adults create the right environment. Teaming is a key component of that environment and gives students a sense of group. At Redwood, students and teachers are placed on interdisciplinary teams. For the sixth grade, this means students are clustered with a small group of teachers as they transition into middle school. In the seventh and eighth grades, our teams group 165 students together. These students share a language arts teacher, a math teacher, a science teacher, and a social studies teacher. These teachers have opportunity to learn about their students, to learn what their students need for additional help. And at all levels, the teachers meet frequently to discuss their shared students and to create support systems that work to make sure that none of these students fall through the cracks. At Redwood, these small communities of diverse learners create a sense of belonging so important for the academic, social, and emotional health and growth of middle-grade students. Another part of a successful and enriching middle school environment is giving students the opportunity to work with classmates from a variety of economic and ethnic backgrounds. While some have suggested the importance of schools to a given neighborhood, middle schools, unlike elementary schools, are not designed to be neighborhood schools, and this is a strength. Middle schools bring together students from a number of different neighborhoods and the populations of these schools mirror the demographics of the entire Napa community. Comprehensive middle schools, like Redwood, give students the opportunity to learn and socialize along teammates from different parts of Napa. For all of its challenges, middle school is often a place where lifelong friendships begin. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts. And thank you to the 50 members of the task force for the many hours you've devoted to developing a plan to best meet the needs of all the middle school students throughout Napa, regardless of where they live.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Laura M. Sarudi.
Hello, my name is Laura Sarudi. In addition to serving on the task force as a Pueblo Vista parent, I've also worked in public higher education for more than 20 years, currently working in the area of data analysis and supporting processes that avoid bias in decision-making. It's important to note that the district made this decision to close Harvest Middle School in October of 2020, well before the task force process commenced. Because of the way this task force was designed, the marks of this earlier decision appeared in multiple aspects of the task force process, including bias in the way data and facts, like the modernization costs discussed earlier, were presented. In the small group process, district officials, often two in a group, were not shy in their advocacy for scenarios C and G, both of which included the closing of Harvest and a complete redesign of the River program. To think through and submit an alternate scenario in six days, I sacrificed work and family time, a luxury others perhaps could not afford. Our groups often didn't know how to apply the guiding principles. The fact that we hadn't reviewed and agreed to them as a larger group led to much confusion. Small group activities severely limited free, open, and creative discussion. In the end, I simply could not support the recommendations that came out of my group. The Napa community was let down by this process, but the Harvest neighborhood would be further let down by the district's scenario G. I invite all of you to explore opportunityoutlet.org, where maps show that Harvest, River, and Silverado are all situated in neighborhoods of Napa where there has historically been less opportunity for children from low-income parents. The Harvest neighborhood has the highest proportion of non-white residents and which are the elementary schools in the district with the highest proportion of English language learners, Snow, Shearer, Phillips, and McPherson. Community anchors like schools can help interrupt poverty and create vibrant neighborhoods, providing access to healthcare, exercise, nutritious food, and civic connection. While you may not believe that it is your job as a school board to provide these things in neighborhoods, I would argue that it is and that you already do. Just look at how Napa families have come to depend on you during this pandemic. The task force's process focused our attention on Harvest, River, and dual-language immersion, such that we did not take time to fully examine the closing of Redwood as an option. I encouraged the trustees to reject the current recommendation. Listen to community members like Frank Martinez. Find a better way to a better solution and hopefully restore some community trust along the way. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Laura Corona.
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight, as well as all the hard work that has been gone in from the task force to come up with these ideas for how to redesign the middle schools. I am the parent of two students in the dual immersion program. My daughter is a seventh grader at Harvest and my son is a fourth grader at Pueblo Vista. I would like to advocate for the Language Academy in the middle school redesign. When Leila began Kinder as a pioneer student at Pueblo Vista, we used to ask her about her day and all her new friends. She would let us know which friends were Spanish-speaking or English-speaking. Within a few weeks, she would tell us about her day and mentions friends' names. Still trying to learn all the names, we would ask if it was a Spanish-speaking friend or English-speaking friend. At that point, she really didn't know. It proved to us that both languages were celebrated and the school culture was strong because all friends were just friends and everyone was working on language. As she transitioned to Harvest, we've experienced a vast difference in the dual immersion education between elementary and middle school. At Pueblo Vista, there's a strong emphasis on language by literacy, culture, community, fluency, and collaboration. There we feel part of a community with shared goals that emphasize language skills. At Harvest, the dual immersion classes feel more like add-ons to Harvest program rather than a succinct collaborative effort towards bilingual education. The dual immersion teachers at Harvest work hard. But in a Language Academy setting, they would have increased opportunities to collaborate with more teachers to build the most effective dual immersion education and proper support. Having two different programs on one campus spreads the resources too thin. When Leila started at Harvest last year, I would again ask her about any new friends she made. She would shily tell me she hasn't gotten to know many other students. The kids that all came from PV just stick together. Though I have grown to know all of the amazing kids that went on the journey with her from PV and love that they continue to have a strong bond, I can see in her eyes and hear in her words that they feel like outsiders on the campus full of kids doing something different. A Language Academy would provide a supportive place for like-minded students to thrive. Please consider the Please consider the implementing of building a Language Academy as a repurposing for the River campus. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Let's see, Figueroa.
Good evening, trustee superintendent Musi, assistant superintendents, NVUSD students and families in our Napa community. I am Betsy Figueroa, a DLI teacher at Harvest Middle School. Earlier, Mr. Murray did a great presentation with projections across different years. During the slide on the number of students that had a choice on to what schools they were enrolled, regardless of boundaries, it did not seem to show the numbers for either River or Harvest Middle Schools. I understand that Ms. Murray was not able to stay for extended time during this meeting. However, I am wondering if this data can be added to the slides. Thank you for your hard work in this matter.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Alejandra Uribe.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Alejandra Uribe and I'm the proud principal at Napa Valley Language Academy. First, I would like to acknowledge that the topic around school closures is not an easy one for any community, but especially for our Napa community as we are very well connected in many ways. The conflicting and heartfelt emotions are experienced by everyone across the system as we consider the closures for Harvest and River. Having said this, as I look at all the aspects of scenario G, I can acknowledge the possibilities and opportunities to strengthen the dual immersion pathway at NVUSD. In my twenty years of being in a dual immersion program, it is the first time where our immersion families are presented with an opportunity to have a middle school dedicated to languages and cultures and this excites me to see this become a possibility. One aspect of a dual immersion elementary school for students is to develop positive attitudes and appreciation towards world languages and cultures as they are immersed in this mindset starting in Kinder. So to have a school that receives students at the middle school level who have this type of upbringing implies that our students can apply these skills and influences at a grander scale. We have seen the type of student leaders that a wall-to-wall dual immersion elementary school can create. And I can only imagine the possibilities that a wall-to-wall dual immersion middle school could do for our community and also at a global level. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, R.G. Hawley.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you so much. If you don't mind, I'm gonna just move over to my other screen so that I can confirm the time. Thank you. Hello, my name is Robin Gamma Hawley. I have a fifth grader who's scheduled to attend River Middle School next fall and a third grader that it would be more appropriate to attend our home middle school, Harvest. I know the board has a very difficult decision in front of them. The current philosophy of closing schools to solve our financial problem is unsustainable. I ask the board, what has been done to find additional revenue so more Napa schools don't have to be closed? Our neighbors of Valley aren't closing schools. That is because they are a basic aid district. Why do students of Valley get nearly two and a half times as much funding as our Napa students? In favor of our Napa students, can the board pursue more equitable funding valley-wide from the County Committee on School District Reorganization? Next, I feel the board has done a great job of recognizing that some students have different needs. An example of this is New Tech High. When on campus at my children's elementary school, I regularly hear the phrase "social, emotional learning for students" and was pleased to see that goal number one of the board's strategic plan includes students thriving socially, emotionally and academically. However, on the tail end of a worldwide pandemic, when our students need more social and emotional support than ever before, there is a proposal to close two of our middle schools. At a time when kids are so fragile and need a comfortable and safe environment, the board is considering taking away the safe space in favor of finances. I request the middle school closures be reconsidered based on the social, emotional well-being of our students. And at a minimum, request that the closures, if they do need to happen, be delayed for two years so those students that are in sixth grade now can finish there at their respective schools. And finally, if the board finds themselves forced to close these middle schools, there needs to be a plan in place to address these students' needs. I'm aware that there is a proposal of Brown's Valley Elementary School to have it TKA campus. This type of creative solution at Brown's Valley and potentially other campuses could be exactly what some students need. I am pleased to hear a K-A pilot is being considered. I heard Mr. Murray, or the first presenter, mention the projection for decreased enrollment within our district. If there is an alternative middle school plan for, excuse me, if there is not an alternative middle school plan for our students other than to have two very large middle schools with no other options for sixth and eighth graders, I fear the board will be creating a much larger problem than what was projected by Mr. Murray and lose many families like my own to private schools.
Ms. Hawley, your time is up. Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Jose. Jose's mic, he needs to unmute his mic. President Gonzalez Modas.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Mr. Jose? We could unmute your mic? Okay. We'll go to the next speaker and we invite you, Mr. Jose, to please raise your hand again. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Isabel.
Buenas noches, ¿me escuchan?
Yes.
Así buenas noches, yo voy a hablar en español porque no puedo hablar en inglés.
Está bien, señora Isabel, me permite para que podamos traer al traductor?
Sí, gracias.
Do we have the translator ready?
Yes, translators have been brought into the main channel.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Señor Isabel, vamos a ponerle el tiempo de los seis minutos, que es el doble de tiempo. Y si puede hablar y permitir pausas seguidas para que pueda el traductor traducir.
Sí, gracias.
Gracias. Adelante, señora Isabel.
Sí, buenas noches, estaba viendo todas sus información y yo estaba pensando, bueno, si quieren ahorrar dinero y y buscar una solución y también para que no haya problema con las zonas, ¿por qué no juntar la escuela de Northwood, Belair y Westview en el nuevo edificio en la calle Salvador?
Have a pause, señora Isabel.
Yes, I was looking at all the information and if you want to save money, bring a solution to this. Why, instead of looking at logistics, why don't you bring together the schools of Northwood, Belair? Perdón, señora, Northwood, Belair, ¿y cuál fue la última?
Westview.
And Westview, ¿en qué calle, perdón?
En el nuevo edificio, que es...
Okay, and a new building?
Ah, ya que vi que tienen menos matrículas de estudiantes y podrían tal vez seguir con el aprendizaje en inglés y mantener abierto Harvest y River. Y no sé si las dos escuelas, Mirror School, Harvest y River, podrían funcionarse.
Since there's less enrollment, perhaps those schools could be brought together and maybe keep together Harvest and River, keep them open. I don't know if they can function that way. Okay, adelante.
En el mismo edificio y o que River regrese a su espacio que tuviera si es que quiere seguir con su programa y así respetar los programas de cada escuelas.
Within the same building, unless River can go back to their same building and that way their program could be saved and respected in a way along with the other schools.
Y así también no se respetaría la zonas de cada vecindario, del norte, del sur, del este. Y también no sé si es posible que así como comunidad nos unamos para unirnos, para no sé, donaciones, para poder reconstruir o arreglar las escuelas. No importa que sea un dólar, dos dólares, pero si todos como comunidad, todos, todos en general, lo podamos.
Okay, and that way we can respect the zones from the neighborhoods, whether it's north, south or east. And also as a community, make donations perhaps to renovate the construction of the schools as well. It doesn't matter how much, one dollar, two dollars or any amount. Okay, adelante.
Y bueno, nadie quiere que se cierre sus escuelas porque todos somos importantes y creo que como comunidad debemos de estar unidos en este tiempo de pandemia.
Nobody wants to close their schools. Everybody is important, but during this pandemic times, I think that we should all remain united.
Y sí, es muy importante que ofrezcan un programa socioemocional y más por todo lo que ha pasado en estos últimos, este último año.
And I think it is important to bring a socioemotional program along because of what we have gone through during this past year.
Y muchas gracias por escucharme. Sé que es muy difícil, pero busquemos otras soluciones en donde no afectemos a la comunidad en general.
Thank you so much for listening. Let's look for other solution where the community in general wouldn't be affected.
Gracias, señora Isabel, por su comentario. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Darcy Storms.
Evening and thank you. I'm a parent of a sixth grader at NVLA who will continue in the dual-language program and a third grader at Willow Elementary. With the recommended closure of Harvest Middle School after the 21-22 school year and should it move forward, I would like to ask the board and district to consider how best to minimize disruption to students as it considers the path forward. In situations like this, there are certain cohorts of students that will experience more disruption than others. One group is this year's NVLA sixth graders who will continue in dual immersion and under this recommendation will not be at the same school for any of their years of middle school. That would be NVLA for sixth grade, seventh grade at Harvest, eighth grade at River and then ninth grade at a high school. The same may be said for the bumpiness of both Harvest and River's incoming sixth grade classes who will each only have one year on their respective campuses before moving. You could, for example, consider moving next year's DLI seventh graders to River immediately so they have an opportunity to have the stability of two years on one campus. Again, to consider how best to minimize the transition for these students. And separately, I'm also a parent of a special needs student at Willow Elementary, which is an amazing school that we love and also a co-chair of the Napa County Community Advisory Committee for Special Need Students. I would like to ask how inclusion can be a priority in both the adjustment of the middle school programs and ask that any K-8 pilots consider students with special needs or students in need of extra academic support benefiting from inclusion in a program like this as they make up a large percentage of students in the district. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yep, Danielle Molinari.
Good evening. The task force was given four parameters: program excellence, fiscal solvency, responsible facility management and equity, of which were to be weighted equally when considering schools in the middle school redesign task force. Responsible facility management can be negated since it was stated the cost of each middle school facilities is roughly the same amount. The Harvest campus is not new, but it's no more costly to keep warm, safe and dry than the other middle schools as pointed out in the presentations at the task force. We could nitpick to say Harvest doesn't have a stage, but then we could also say the other middle schools don't have two gyms, an animation lab, a proper-sized track or a pool. Fiscal solvency can also be negated since the district said we're not taking future sale into account and both River and Harvest are not currently operating at capacity. It was said that the current dual immersion kindergarten class would eventually fill the proposed Language Academy middle school, but there is no guarantee all of those students would continue in dual immersion through middle school. So in actuality, the task force was left to decide what is equitable and what has program excellence. The highest program excellence is currently at Harvest with dual immersion, which has been emphasized that will be kept. Since it does not operate as a standalone at Harvest, it actually affords those dual immersions students to also take electives like garden, music, animation, design and art, putting their program excellence even higher. If dual immersion were relocated to the new River campus and students wanted to take an elective, a seven-period day would have to be added, which Rob stated would cost millions, which gets rid of any cost savings. So this leaves equity as the big piece and closing Harvest Middle School is the most inequitable choice that could be decided on. Closing Harvest and moving the dual immersion program to the River campus only widens the gap between our students and our community. If the Harvest campus closes, the locality of current River campus puts an immense burden on the families of South Napa, Latinx or not. Four hundred and seventy-five students that currently attend Harvest live within walking distance of the campus. That's sixty-nine percent of the student population. I know the fiscal cost for busing is not expensive, but the actual cost of busing in other terms of their lives is huge. Redwood is, as the district puts it in busing terms, is as the crow flies distance from River. So it makes no sense logistically to keep both campuses as middle schools. River Middle School and Redwood Middle School are so close together that it would make more sense to have one of those student populations be spread amongst the remaining middle schools than to keep both. The district has been pushing for inclusion and equity, but the choice to close Harvest is pushing for exclusion and inequity. I understand the previous board and administration made the choice to build a brand-new campus with the majority of Measure H funds. However, just because it's a brand-new campus doesn't mean it should be the one to stay open as a middle school. What can we do with the River campus that won't hurt our South Napa community?
Your time is up. Thank you for your comment. Mr. Reese, next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Claudette Chateau. I have two sons in the second and fourth grade at Pueblo Vista Elementary School. First, I want to thank the redesign task force for their research and diligent work. I hear the passion and the public comments. I am, however, in favor of the Middle School Language Academy dedicated to dual immersion. The Language Academy would provide motivation to achieve high levels of proficiency in Spanish and currently data shows that it diminishes in the intermediate grades. The Language Academy would continue to strengthen the program particularly as it relates... The Language Academy would continue to strengthen the program particularly as it relates to the development of long-term viability of a strong K-12 bilingual pathway and the possibility of replicating effective bilingual pathways across the state. Expanding the high-quality implementation in a wall-to-wall language academy will play a pivotal role in the struggle for educational opportunity for English learners and native English speakers alike. My family is in favor of the Middle School Language Academy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Hello.
Yes, Mr. Reese, is that our next speaker?
Yes, sorry, Jessica.
Hi.
Yes.
Hi, I'm currently a parent with children at both Harvest and Pueblo Vista. And I believe that Napa Valley Unified School District needs to have a middle school Language Academy. It would create a continuation of our community-based elementary schools that have allowed our children to develop such high levels of bilingual education, including listening, speaking, reading, and writing proficiency. Having a strand of dual immersion running at a middle school makes it difficult for both students and teachers to achieve their goals and continue to expand the bilingual program. Having a Language Academy for middle school would allow teachers the support they need with Spanish language and would allow for shared and common goals across the school between staff, students, and parents. We really hope that the school board takes our suggestions into consideration and build a strong Language Academy so that we can create a successful dual immersion environment for our children for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Sarah W.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. I want to thank everybody for their time. I'm a parent at Brown's Valley. My name is Sarah Witt. I would just like to voice my support for turning Brown's Valley into a TK through eighth school. I was very excited to see that on the slides as a possibility that we could possibly pilot this program and be the example for the rest of the district. We have the classrooms available. We have the bathrooms available. We have a principal that is enthusiastic and willing to lead this new endeavor in our district. And I would just be really excited if we could be the ones to pilot it. Thank you so much for your time. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Orlando Alcarrion.
Thank you very much. My name is Dr. Orlando Carrion. And I'm a proud parent of an NVLA second grader and also a parent on the middle school task force. I would like to make three points based on my experience on the task force. We have a profound misunderstanding between equity and equality in our district and community. Equality is about giving students the same thing. For example, getting computers to all of our students or delivering X amount of resources to the majority of students. These examples are driven by an idea that the world is fair if everyone is given the same thing. However, this model does not equate to equity or justice. Equity is about giving the most vulnerable students what they need when they need it. This requires us to turn our attention to where there has been neglect. It requires us to act in the service of the most vulnerable youth, period. This leads to my second point. Latinx students are not a monolithic entity. Currently, dialogue around our Latinx student center around their ethnic background or language needs. We say things like Latinx students need XYZ or bilingual students need XYZ. Centering equity would ask a very different question. What are the needs of our most vulnerable socioeconomic disadvantaged Latinx students? By asking this question in this form, we speak honestly and truthfully about the vast difference within our largely Latinx community. When talking about Latinx students, thus, we must constantly ask which Latinx students are we talking about? As these subgroups have drastically different needs. Thirdly, six out of the twelve items of the guiding principles that we followed in the task force were financially focused. Only three items were centered on equity. Again, equity is not being centered here. It is not surprising as we live in a society that continues to neglect and erase the needs of our historically oppressed communities. My question is, what is the cost of this neglect? What is the cost of trying to undo systems of oppression that have existed for decades? Undoing systems of oppression and engaging in any type of equity work is going to be extensive and expensive. Before closing schools down or closing down programs, we must ask what is the cost to our community? How many students will we lose? What is effect on our most vulnerable populations? Misunderstanding the affirmation points has led us to advance a proposal that suggests closing a school like Harvest. No matter which way you slice it, closing Harvest is anti-equity. I'd like to close with a story about ants. Yes, the six-legged insect. If an ant gets sick or catches a disease or virus, all the ants in the colony take turns licking the sick ants in hopes of washing away the illness. In this process, all the ants are inoculated with the virus and the whole colony is protected and healthier against future viruses. Walking in the direction of our most vulnerable youth, understanding their needs, listening to their realities, working to their wellness is our best hope for working toward equity and justice and overall wellness in our community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Mauro Snyder.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, I'm actually writing, reading this for my daughter. Good evening, Dr. Mercedes School Administrator School Board. I want to acknowledge how hard this is for everyone. My name is Savannah Snyder and I'm currently eleventh grader at Vintage High School. I was sad to hear that the River program is in danger of closing. River has had many wonderful aspects, but my experience is very near to my heart. I never really fit in in elementary school and it wasn't until my experience at River School that I finally felt that I landed somewhere. It's funny because it's usually the other way around. The social emotional learning platform was exactly what I needed to soar. It helped me to understand who I was, understand my anxiety, to own it, to learn about it, advocate for myself. In fact, my slideshow is exactly, my slideshow that I created about what anxiety looks like has been used in trainings. River helped me have that voice. It was a small environment that made me feel safe. The teachers, the administrators, the support staff, all of them were incredible. I know a lot of my fellow classmates felt something different there. Please consider what this school uniquely brings to our community. If you take River away, it might take away a choice for kids who don't fit in the traditional larger school environment respectfully, Savannah Snyder. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Chuck Dressel.
Thank you. My name's Chuck Dressel. I am a teacher at Redwood Middle School. I'm speaking tonight in support of the district's proposal outlined this evening. As a member of the redesigned task force, I can assure you that our work was thorough, debate was spirited, and a strong consensus was reached. In the creation of the task force, the district was careful to ensure that stakeholders from across the community were included because the outcome of this process does not affect just those students whose campus will close. It affects students throughout our entire community. The data examined in the task force meetings was accurate and the nearly unanimous conclusion of the working groups that this plan should advance was well-founded. I urge you to resist the political pressure that is inevitable with any school closure and to support the plan that has been put before you. In addition, I would like to take a moment to address what I believe to be a false narrative circulating in our community about our comprehensive middle schools and their ability to meet the needs of all of our students. For nearly thirty years, I've been an educator at Redwood Middle School, Napa's largest comprehensive middle school campus. When students come to Redwood, they see an accurate reflection of their community in the peer group that surrounds them. During my career at Redwood, we've relied upon our culture of teaming and collaboration to maintain a safe and supportive learning environment for all of our students. The teaming model at RMS places sixth grade students with two teachers for the four core subjects. Our seventh and eighth grade teams are organized around a group of four teachers, one for each core subject, all sharing the same students. In past years, teams have moved with students from seventh to eighth grade. Redwood, Silverado, and Harvest are all safe places for students to learn, are all staffed by experienced, caring, highly professional teachers, and are all institutions who place the best interests of their students first. Finally, I would like to add this thought. NASA's mission to return mankind to the moon includes nine female astronauts. Amongst these extraordinary women is a graduate of Redwood Middle School. It is entirely conceivable that the first woman ever to set foot on the moon will be a graduate of a large comprehensive middle school program from Napa, California. I think that it's safe to say that Kate Rubin's middle school experience at Redwood was not a barrier to her success. Rather, it was one of many essential, important, and valuable steps along a pathway leading her to the moon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Wendy Agans Dominguez.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Wendy Agans Dominguez, parent of Joseph Payton, a River sixth grader, and Lauren, a River graduate. Through River's exceptional whole child program, my daughter found a diverse, inclusive community, learned to advocate for herself, and continues to thrive in college. My son began at Vishi's alternative program through open enrollment. A few months in, NVUSD closed that program, so we transferred to Yountville with its similar structure. Yountville was threatened with closure every other year his attendance there. I'm grateful he was able to finish fifth grade before NVUSD shuttered yet another high achieving program. Ten months later, we're now facing closure of not one but two middle schools and reshuffling to create a new one. The guiding principles run counter to this option. First, program excellence. River School is a high achieving program. It epitomizes social emotional learning and long-term successes backed by countless studies. Social emotional strengths increase academic achievement throughout a child's educational years and beyond. Next, fiscal solvency. While acknowledging declining enrollment, we must acknowledge our middle schools are the least affected by this decline according to the district's own numbers. River is the only middle school with a waitlist. However, NVUSD controls the list and will not allow those vacancies to be filled and they will not allow River to promote itself to the community, so families are aware of this exceptional program. Why are we here now when less than two years ago, River School gave up their charter to help the district's financial troubles? Dr. Mercedes said the district was committed to River's quote thriving academic program. When words and actions do not align, trust is eroded. Next, responsible facility management. Closing Harvest is not a decision based on demographics or the equity espoused. And River was moved into a new facility one year ago with greater student capacity. But NVUSD refuses the filling of those seats. These steps directly oppose responsible facility management. Lastly, equity. District numbers paint a picture that directs their desired outcome. However, the per-child number being used instead of percentages skews information. This hand-eye trick does not compare apples to apples. Closing River does not support all students having high access to quality education. River meets a specific need for those students. My son, who would drown in a much larger educational system. Closing Harvest is inequitable to their neighborhood and all South half of families it serves. Diversity and inclusivity are wide-ranging and not reflective of the narrow criteria presented by this district. Continual closures do not give staff or students a sense of value or security. Erosion of trust is hardly a climate to attract highly skilled talent or new families. Declining enrollment is not just about cost of living. Education is not one size fits all. We deserve options. NVUSD Board of Trustees, you represent our entire community, please vote no on closing River and Harvest. The district must craft a process that truly seeks diverse ideas where conversations are not strong-armed or quieted by different district staff. We can do better. Our children deserve better. Please note, vote no. Let's start again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Luis Alcazar.
Yes, hello everybody. Thank you for having me here. My name is Luis Alcazar, not Louis Alcazar, as was mentioned earlier. I just wanted to make sure that goes on the record. I am writing to you as a community member and as a parent of an incoming NVUSD student over at Polo Vista, who will be in kindergarten this fall, and informed by my experience as an equity-minded college administrator and a high school education scholar. To express my extreme disappointment in NVUSD's decision to propose the closure of Harvest Middle School. It is emotional a little bit. NVUSD has not been transparent and did not properly involve the community in proposing to close Harvest was very inequitable in allocation of funds from the last bond, in my opinion, which resulted in Harvest receiving hardly anything and did not exhaust all other options to relieve their budget deficit. Is it equity-minded that Napa, that the Napa Middle School with the least white and most economically oppressed student populations being closed? Is it equity-minded that school sites with a higher white student population and more affluent areas are being saved? If NVUSD was truly invested in equity-minded practices, they would be considering other options that would ensure that the neighborhood with the least educational resources and the highest need to have a school within walking distance remains open. To do otherwise, NVUSD is investing in oppressive practices, not equity-minded practices. I urge you that I urge, I highly urge you, the board, to reject this proposal and pause once again on this trajectory to close Harvest, which would only further oppress the citizens living in Harvest community. I also recommend that NVUSD be transparent and forthcoming in exposing past inequitable funding practices that continued to exclude our most historically excluded students in Napa. Lastly, I recommend that NVUSD bring in an external equity-minded consultant to more equitably close the district's budget gap. And this, this equitable, equity-minded consultant should show and prove that they have shown equity-minded practices in past, with past clients. This needs to happen. Harvest needs to be saved. And we need to really put our most vulnerable students first. Thank you for the time and for listening to me and please make the right decision moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Evan Bertolani.
Hello, everyone. I have been following the task force process over the last few months, discussing it with people at my school and other schools as a teacher, as a union rep, and as a human being. I come tonight at the close of the first task force process with two thoughts. One for the Board of Trustees and one for the NVUSD community as a whole. First, to the board. If you believe that this decision has been fairly reached and is in the best interests of the NVUSD community, vote for it. I at least will support you and seek to make the best of whatever decision is made. But I do ask that you consider that the task force process has been deeply flawed, as has been outlined extensively tonight, and that we might be able to make not just a postponed decision, but a better decision for our teachers, our parents, and our students. I know where I stand personally after months of discussions. However, I acknowledge that you all have different perspectives and have more information than we do. So I trust in all of you to weigh these possibilities. But more importantly tonight, I wanted to speak to members of the middle school community who are listening. Over the course of this process, I have heard people from every school site, from the district office and from the board criticize each other's integrity and honesty. If we continue to do that after a decision has been made and after our middle schools consolidate, it is a disservice to NVUSD students and to each other. Please remember what I have come to believe most strongly throughout this process. Whether we agree on decisions or not, we are all doing what we think is best for kids. Thank you all for considering this decision in all of its gravity.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Wendy Beltrami.
Hi, my name is Wendy Beltrami. I'm a former River parent as well as a 20-year River staff member. I have some questions for you and some information I want to share as you deliberate this life-changing decision. First, did you know that NVUSD has always dictated the number of students that River School is allowed to enroll? Did you know that NVUSD denied River's requests to grow while at the old Sonoma Road campus and even now has restricted our enrollment in spite of our having students on the waiting list and the room to grow? Did you know that it's been three years now since River was allowed to hold a transparent, public, draw name out of a fishbowl enrollment lottery? The district now administers the lottery process and the outcome. Did you know that River was not allowed to contact NVUSD fifth graders this year to provide them with information about how to enroll at River for the upcoming school year? The open enrollment window this year was only 32 days long. Fourteen of those were non-school days, leaving only 18 days remaining when families could call us with questions about our school or questions about the enrollment process. And yet, in spite of this brief window, 230 families submitted online applications to attend River. Did you know that school buses are not available to students who choose to attend River School, thereby limiting our population to students whose parents are able to drive them to school? Did you know that this year, for the first time in 26 years, NVUSD has provided us with a bilingual parent liaison one day per week? We want the chance to share our implicit curriculum and social emotional learning practices with a greater number of students with the support of NVUSD to fill our new facility. So I ask, what is the perceived negative impact of allowing River to continue to provide a much-needed public option for Napa families who are seeking an alternative to one of the large middle schools? There is no financial benefit to closing River. On the contrary, we currently have 18 students on deck to start River in the fall who are new to NVUSD or re-entering NVUSD. Would they enroll elsewhere in the district if River didn't exist? That's a question that hasn't been asked. These big decisions that will impact our community for years to come are supposed to be data-driven, and yet, the relevant data has not been gathered. Please ask yourselves, is there a valid reason to close River School? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Ms. Reese.
Yes. Laura R. Miller.
Thank you. Good evening. Buenas noches, Dr. Masetti, Board of Education Trustees and community members. My name is Laura Miller. I am a Napa resident, parent of two NVUSD dual-language immersion students and a local businesswoman. I've served on the 7/11 District Advisory Committee and most recently the District Middle School Redesign Task Force. After the task force meetings concluded, I still had concerns. This past week, I was able to meet individually with six of seven of the trustees to express my concerns and engage in discussion. Thank you all for that time. I would also like to thank Dr. Masetti for answering my questions and providing her perspective. I understand that NVUSD values Spanish dual-language immersion programming, and since the 1980s has been investing in this program to meet the high demand from NVUSD families. Harvest Middle School is located in the southwestern area of the city of Napa, consisting of predominantly Latinx residents. It is also a neighborhood comprised of substantial multifamily housing units and affordable housing. In one of my conversations with Dr. Masetti, she confirmed that placing DLI programs in schools located in predominantly Latinx neighborhoods is very intentional. Historically successful DLI schools have thrived in Latinx neighborhoods. Over the years, NVUSD's DLI programs have organically attracted families citywide as well as families in their own neighborhood. These out-of-neighborhood families, they are choosing to have their students learn at DLI schools. You cannot quantify the positive impact of bringing families together from different neighborhoods and who differ linguistically, culturally, and oftentimes socio-economically. The type of collaborating and fostering of cultural inclusivity by way of dual-language immersion programming is priceless. Why would we uproot a middle school that houses a successful DLI program? A program and culture that has been successfully developing at the middle school level since 2003? Why would we disinvest when the incredible returns on investment are there? I am also deeply concerned about the long-term economic consequences this decision inflicts on one of our lowest-income census tracts. Businesses like Lola's Market, Southside Cafe, and the Londer Mount in that neighborhood depend on the hundreds of school-related day trips to drive exposure and awareness to their businesses. This area already lost Health and Human Services Agency Campus in 2018. 400 staff day trips, not including visits, no longer happening in the southwest Napa area. To now take the school is exactly the kind of disinvestment that creates structural poverty in neighborhoods. In my opinion, this isn't just a bad education decision. This is a lasting economic blow to an already fragile census trap. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Ms. Reese.
Yes, Maritza Negrete.
Good evening. My name is Maritza Negrete. I'm a parent of two NVUSD students who have been a part of the dual immersion program. I grew up in American Canyon and moved to Southern California. As a family, we decided to move back to American Canyon so that my recently retired mother could help us with childcare. When I received a job offer in Napa, our decision to accept and move back was based on our ability to have our son start kindergarten in a dual immersion program. If we weren't able to get into Pueblo Vista at the last minute, we wouldn't have moved. I share my story with you because I know there are many families who are willing to drive out of their way for education that they value. When we first started at Pueblo Vista, the dual immersion program was a strand as part of the rest of the school. But as the years have gone on, they've become a full dual immersion program, and I've seen the improvement in the educational programs. My daughter is currently a third grader and my son is a sixth grader, and I've seen how the program has improved. Next, while watching the task force meetings, I was appalled by the fact that NVSD is failing our English learners at the middle school level, at all the schools, especially when you compare it to the rest of the state. It's despicable. The dual immersion program is a proven solution and has closed the gap with our English learners at the elementary level. And I believe that the creation of a language academy will continue to do the same at the middle school level. Even though the school districts have become the victims of a high cost of living and a decrease in the job market, they are also what attracts people to come to certain cities. As you have seen, the dual immersion program continues to attract many families, and we need to attract more with our declining enrollment. Currently at Napa High, the students from the DI program can receive a seal of biliteracy. However, those who didn't participate in the dual immersion program can also receive that same seal of biliteracy. And at the Santa Monica School District, students who complete the dual immersion program earn the seal of biliteracy, just as we offer here, but they also recognize them with an immersion medallion. This is a way to separate those kids who completed the program versus those who just passed the Spanish AP test. When I talked to families who decided to pull their kids from the dual immersion program at the middle school level, a common answer I hear is that children don't need to do the dual immersion program anymore in order to receive the seal of biliteracy. Currently at NVUSD, the elementary DI programs are very strong, but at middle school and high school, there is room for growth. Improving these programs will continue to attract more families to the district while simultaneously working to close the gap of achievement for our English learners. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Ms. Reese.
Yes, S. Green.
Hi, I'd like to share our experience in American Canyon. We were given the impression that we would get another middle school. Declining enrollment made that infeasible. Paying more locally to support the same programming at two campuses, the only alternative was also infeasible. Even though we were disappointed, it was the right decision. ACMS has excellent comprehensive school program. Advanced math, robotics, band choir, the list goes on because of its size and resulting efficiency. The choice must always be programming over brick and mortar. That doesn't mean the decision is easy or easy to accept. No one wants to close a school, or open a new one for that matter. But in objections, I haven't heard suggestions for a parcel tax to pay for renovating and keeping schools open with solid funding. As much as we may wish, there's no free lunch. If we were to keep everything open, somebody would have to pay the difference between what the state gives the district and what's needed. Who will pay the difference? Decisions made years ago have put us in this bind. Let's be honest, if $35 million had been put towards renovating Harvest instead of Salvador, we wouldn't be having this conversation. We have to adapt with what we have on hand. The task force made the best possible recommendation. It's not going to make everyone happy. Before and after-school mitigations are critical enablers. But from our experience in the AC, I submit that parents, administrators, and teachers need to keep in mind that programming is the most important thing for our children. Decisions made in Napa have an impact on children in the AC and vice versa. In short, we're all in it together. Please focus on our children and work together to give them the best education and school experience possible. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Ms. Reese.
Yes, Catherine Kensock.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Catherine Kensock, and I'm a member of, I was a member of the Middle School Redesign Committee. First, I want to acknowledge the difficult decisions in front of you. The NVUSD Board has faced many difficult decisions, and after serving on the Middle School Redesign Committee, I fully understand how that feels more than ever. I don't think there are any easy answers. However, I'm confident that you will give it your best effort, keeping all the interests of the district in mind. From the perspective of both a dual-language immersion teacher and a former NVUSD dual-language student, I support the committee's decision with Plan G. Today, as a dual-language teacher, I am both grateful and proud to see the place that dual-language immersion has in NVUSD. I believe that the current dual-language immersion programs have grown in their academic rigor, and our students are building a solid foundation for the upper grades. Plan G offers students and their families a clear path to AP courses and the state seal of biliteracy. I believe a wall-to-wall dual-immersion middle school will only strengthen the education for these students and these children because the program will be the focus of the entire staff and the school community. I also like the idea that there's a chance for students to join the immersion program in middle school, and this could be a wonderful opportunity for native Spanish speakers who missed the program at the beginning of elementary school. The difference between River's middle school's demographics and those of NVUSD gave me pause, and I saw this as an equity issue. However, in listening to the advocates for River and reflecting on my own middle school experiences, I quickly found common ground. I know as a struggling student, both socially and academically in middle school, like many middle schoolers in our district, I could have benefited from their program. I support River's vision of students having a strong sense of self, self-motivated, self-disciplined, and self-reliant. I've seen River students excel in high school and beyond. I see this as an opportunity to expand the River School program of self-reliance and responsibility to the rest of the district. River should live in every school, and we should learn from their success in creating a home for middle school students. I think students can and will be successful when they have support, a sense of belonging, and a safety net of the school community, which can be done in a larger school setting if we are committed to social and emotional learning being a priority. Thank you for this time, and I wish you well in this decision.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Ms. Reese.
Yes, Claire.
Hi all, thank you for hearing me out tonight. My name is Claire McConnell. I'm the mother of three daughters, an incoming sixth grader to River Middle School, one just the year after, hopefully also to River, and another few years down the road. Our family recently relocated to Napa from the Deer Park Angwin area after the recent devastating glass fire. After much family discussion, we made the very difficult decision to leave the community we loved and the little Angwin school we were so happy with and make Napa our new home. We spent months researching school options as my girls continued virtually at their previous school. After multiple conversations with friends, coworkers, other River parents, and professionals in the field of education, we decided River was the perfect fit, and we were thrilled when the acceptance letter of admission came our way. All my children are a bright light, but my oldest, the incoming sixth grader, is especially wondrous. She is highly intelligent, creative, but also very curious and quirky and a little bit confused with her gender. She thrives with a smaller school environment, with peers and teachers that understand her uniqueness. She needs the extra touch of social emotional interaction that River can provide. During the current atmosphere, children in our community have endured enough trauma, from wildfires to the ongoing pandemic. It is still ongoing. Given that there is still uncertainty over vaccinations for children and that we as a community will not reach herd immunity until most of us are vaccinated, it seems harmful and counterproductive to make significant changes that increase class sizes in school numbers at this time. Despite the school boards' wish to deal with any financial issues and their desire to maximize school potential, I strongly recommend that these changes be postponed until the Napa community can settle into a more peaceful place. This is not the time to be putting all these changes on our children, and the vast majority of parents in this community feel the same way. Dr. Masetti, you claim this process has been to protect all district students, not just some, but then admit that the dual-language program is a focus and a priority that does not prioritize all students, especially ones that have had no too little experience with Spanish speaking that are already at the fifth and sixth grade level. Ms. Jennings, you said that this decision will drive inclusion. Do you honestly think that this decision will drive inclusion within our community? I don't think so, and I think that you will see those repercussions. I hope that you vote no on this decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Ms. Reese.
Yes, Nicole Clancy.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. I'd like to start off with a quote if I could. Quote, "In reflecting, maybe it's time to take a pause. This may not be the right time to ask for a sacrifice." Dr. Masetti, October of 2020. This statement was true six months ago, and it's true right this very moment. I am a parent of a sixth-grade River student. We chose River because of its track record of success. The program that my daughter has thrived under promoted socio-emotional reflection and growth. It's promoted a student community of inclusion of all races, genders, special needs, and identities. River has promoted strong skills of empowerment, independence, creativity, collaboration, and academics. The measured academic success of River is self-evident. Ranked top 50 in math and top 30 in reading proficiency in California, this school produces intelligent, empathetic, and driven leaders. We are the only middle school in Napa that sees an enrollment, the waiting list, year after year. So why are we shutting down a successful program? The proposition set forth would destroy a hugely successful program to replace it with one that's floundering. Harvest Middle School currently has 200 students enrolled in their DLI program. Napa High currently has 61 students in DLI. It's no secret that the district is losing DLI students around the time of middle school to high school, so it makes little sense to send 200 kids over to a 630-student-capacity campus. until the issues of DLI attrition are identified and resolved. The River community is not alone in their desire to table this decision. The task force has done a fairly effective job in trying to pit River and Harvest communities against each other, when in reality, our community goals are very aligned. Taking away the neighborhood Harvest campus would be devastating for the families in close proximity. Sending these kids to River, Silverado, and Redwood does them a disservice. Not to mention that two million dollars in annual savings from these proposed closures accounts for 1.2% of the total budget. Is 1.2% really worth thrusting our children into further chaos? It feels as if this decision was made for us, not with us. It feels manipulative. These past twelve months have brought one devastation after another. We struggled through an ongoing pandemic, social unrest, economic strife, and environmental emergencies. Our children have paid the highest price. They're already dealing with the very real and lasting effects of depression, anger, and anxiety due to these unprecedented times. This is what PTSD looks like, my friends. Now is not the time to further the trauma. Now is the time for measured temperance and humanity. And so I'll end by reiterating my strong support in tabling this decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Ari Zape. Are you there, Mrs. Zape? Her mic's unmuted, but I'm not hearing anything. Hello?
No, technical difficulties.
Oh, there you go.
Now, oh, there I go, okay, sorry. I think maybe my AirPods have been on too long tonight. I have, I'm a parent from American Canyon, and I've been observing the task force process from afar. It's a difficult decision that this board has to make this year, and I don't envy it. American Canyon has had a belt tightening as well in the last few years. We went through it two years ago when we learned that our planned second middle school would not be built. And it was a difficult time in American Canyon. However, we have come as a community to understand that the programs, teachers, and administrators that are in American Canyon Middle School right now are far more important than the physical space that we would have split and probably lost some of our programming if we had built that second school. In fact, if that had happened, if Dr. Masetti and her team had not helped us make that hard decision and made that hard decision, we would be sitting in the same seats right now as this conversation in Napa. We feel, I feel like River students and programming had an excellent, unique program as a charter, but the days of endless falling money for kind of a skewed demographic program, I think, are over. We need to have space in all of the middle schools for all types of kids, just like the team program at Redwood. And I think there's ways to encompass the feeling and the emotion and the support that River School did in other schools, not only in Napa but in American Canyon as well. That's really what equity looks like. The task force has done a hard job. The truth of the matter is, there aren't, there isn't enough money. We don't get to get money from another school district. It is what it is. Enrollment is declining. And this job that the board is being asked to do right now is not going to be any easier next year or the year after. I urge you to go forward with the recommendation that has been made. It's been thought about, discussed at nauseam, and sometimes we just need to move forward and make the best of it. So good luck to the board. I support your decision, and I hope we can focus on programming, teachers, and the schools and not get so caught up in the brick and mortar. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Ross Wheatley.
Hello? Sorry, I take it pretty bloody. My name is Ross Wheatley. I'm a father of two elementary students, a second grader, and a TK child at Pueblo Vista Elementary. I'm in favor of the Language Academy proposed by the Napa Valley Unified School District. Being immersed in the dual-immersion program for three years has led us to build an incredible community of like-minded parents and children, and has offered invaluable teachers and resources. Continuing the program an additional three years with the proposed Language Academy not only strengthens the education and foundation of the dual-immersion programs implemented at both Pueblo Vista and NVLA, but also solidifies our children's commitment to the program. The dual-immersion program offered by NVUSD was the foremost reason we chose to enroll our children in Napa Public Schools. I know the decision to close the middle school was the one the board did not come upon lightly, but the opening of a new Language Academy is a fantastic compromise and much needed in our community. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Elizabeth Boyd.
Hello, can you acknowledge if you can hear me, please?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to say I'm a parent of a seventh grader at River School. And of course, although my child will be onto high school by the time all of this is enacted, I think it's important for me to speak up for all of the children in the future who have needs similar to his. My son is, I think academically would do fine in other settings, but after a great deal of research, we selected River School for him because he has very distinct social and emotional needs. He feels very overwhelmed in a large setting and retreats into himself. And we have found River is a very supportive environment for him, where he feels empowered to speak up, be himself, be confident, and I think that is extremely valuable. And if we are talking about equity, I think we have to bear in mind that equity means giving students the things that they need, and that's also social and emotional support, not just academic or financial support. So, I know, of course, I acknowledge the district has a very difficult problem to solve. Demographics and the cost of living in Napa are drivers outside of the board's control, and we're forced to deal with the results of that. And, you know, I fully support the board's efforts in trying to find ways to deal with this very, very serious problem. But I feel that the district is, by eliminating the River School program, embarking on a path of eliminating options and narrowing the variety of educational opportunities, and that does not speak to, I think, the equity needs of many of the students in this community. River's value, I think I want to point, I, there is a difference between the physical space and the program. River's value, in my mind, is in the program. It's been honed over many years. It's a team. It's a culture that delivers results and great benefits to the community of Napa. And I think its value is, you know, fully shown by the high demand for the school year after year after year. I think keeping this program is really critical for the community, and that the idea that we can break this program up and scatter it throughout a bunch of other schools, and somehow all of its culture and values and strengths will magically sprout in these schools is really not supported by anything I've seen here, and I think keeping the program intact, wherever it may be housed, is really of great value to this community, and I hope that other students in this community have the opportunity to go there, just as my son has. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
It's Tracy Moskowitz.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I am Tracy Moskowitz, an NVUSD grad from New Technology High School, current staff member at River, parent of a student at Pueblo Vista, and a homeowner in American Canyon. The fear of speaking out and speaking out and up and truthfully is why the proposal is lacking authenticity. The fifty-person middle school redesign task force was calculated, a calculated show, with the only options being presented to them designed by the district, which I agree with Harvest's twenty-two-page paper, which emphasized how mismanaged and steered the task force was. On April sixth, the task force decided Scenario G was the best fit moving forward, which was titled "DLI Elementary Status Quo Creation of DLI Middle School Language Academy", which stated, "Close River School and Harvest Middle School and repurpose the River facility." Tonight, as the district has repackaged Scenario G, this proposal, instead of the task force presenting it to you, is not the closure of Harvest and River, but instead the redesign of River Middle School. Tonight's proposal of saving 2.2 million is the same amount as Scenario B, which was to close a large middle school. Why also pay for the redesign of River Middle School? The cost of which is not being reflected in the cost of tonight's proposal. It sounds as though the district and community is hoping to push River School's social-emotional program to other schools by sprinkling teachers to other sites to spread wealth and knowledge. Although the district, allowing the districts to replace Hualoa philosophy with the Language Academy that currently does not have enough students to fill the campus, instead of uniting the programs. While it is possible for River School's program to be adopted by another school, the unity and consistency of the Hualoa philosophy and agreement system is a school-wide decision. The Hualoa philosophy in which River's implicit and explicit curriculum is built upon is more than a social-emotional program. It is daily advisory to meet about the behavior, the three parables, the right choice, as well as reflecting about the four Rs. We have the same behavior system on the entire campus, which means consistency for students. The school has a looping with teachers, just like Redwood, to help build community. This way of running a school is campus-wide and does not just come from a few teachers. Advisory is another avenue for students to get to know, for students to get to know teachers and be heard and seen. I am a community member, parent, and staff member, and I disagree with tonight's proposal. Although I am speaking up for River School's program, South Napa needs to keep Harvest Campus open is essential, and I would urge you to consider moving Redwood to the Salvador Campus and combining River and Harvest. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Kaplan Commandant.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Everett Kaplan. Thank you for holding this meeting. Thanks for sticking with us so late in the evening. Thanks for the hard work of the task force and the staff. I'm here to recommend that you not accept the district proposal and recommend that you ask the task force to provide the board a more holistic approach to cost-cutting. School closure should be a last resort, not the only choice. Like most budgets, the district budget is primarily made up of labor costs. There are a number of proven measures to reduce labor costs over the short term. Some of these include offering early retirements, particularly at higher salary levels, and not backfilling positions after incumbents vacate. Closely related is looking at the composition of the labor pool. The district looks to have one classified for every three certificated in terms of budget salaries. It may be worth knowing how that ratio compares to other districts. Another budget line item is services, and maybe there are opportunities to renegotiate contracts and consultants. A singular focus on school closure seems to contradict the task force's own guiding principle on program excellence. River and Harvest are high-performing schools. Instead of increasing access to social-emotional learning, repurposing River would reduce access to socio-emotional learning. So I recommend that you vote no and ask the task force to provide the board a more comprehensive, holistic approach. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Lauren Daly.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lauren Daly, and I'm a River parent. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. The proposal that you're asked to vote on next week will save an estimated 2.2 million annually. When viewed against the overall district expenditure budget for the 2022-23 school year, this is a savings of just 1.2%. We are paying a very high price for this 1.2%. The closure and relocation or dissolution of two middle schools, both of which are invaluable to the communities they serve, is what I would call the nuclear option. It is traumatic at a time when kids are already traumatized. It should be an option of last resort. To exercise the nuclear option should mean that all other viable options have been identified, examined, and ruled out. There has not been a rigorous and honest examination of other options by the district or by the task force at the direction of the district. The only options that have been considered by the task force and the only options they were allowed to present were school closures. We've heard many task force members voice concerns with the data that was presented and with the process itself. There were even task force members who voted to close the very schools they are trying to save. The only way that can happen is if the options are artificially limited by a rigid and heavily controlled process without a good-faith attempt to investigate the problem and look at a broad variety of solutions. As you consider this matter, please ask yourself these questions. Can you honestly say that you have been presented with enough information to rule out all other options? Do you believe that this is the only option, or is this just the only option that you are being allowed to consider? The closure of two key schools without exploration of other options should be unacceptable. The messages that are being sent to the Harvest and the River communities with these actions are clear. Had there been a true opportunity for debate and an open and thoughtful exchange of ideas, the message might seem different. But there was no room for thoughtful debate in this process. Emails to the task force did not go directly to the task force, and there was no evidence that the task force was even allowed to consider valid recommendations from the public. I sent suggestions to the task force, as did my husband, and I asked if they were received, and they were not received until right before the deadline for the task force to make recommendations. You cannot make good choices without having good choices. You trustees are the elected voice of the people, and you have not been presented with good choices. Please do not allow yourselves and our community to be forced into this choice. Please ask for more data, not just...
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Lorraine Richardson.
Oh, sorry about that. Hey.
Ms. Richardson, go ahead.
Go ahead and unmute your mic, Ms. Richardson.
Oh, I had unmuted twice. I'm sorry. I wasn't going to raise my hand, but this evening when I was listening to the Warm, Safe, and Dry numbers presented, I thought I should. I'd like the district to question the numbers presented. This evening, Mr. Pearson said the Warm, Safe, and Dry numbers to the district, but these numbers were not the same presented to the task force at the second meeting, nor supported by the email by Dr. Masetti to the task force on April first. Silverado was 21.5 million, Harvest was 23.3 million, and Redwood was 25.5 million. These numbers do differ from what was presented this evening to the district. Even the Warm, Safe, and Dry numbers presented to the task force don't match the special meeting to the district on 1/21. Question the numbers. Question it all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Daggonal Six. Yes, Daganel Six.
Hello, my name is Scott Monk. I am an NBLA and Harvest alumni. I am also a parent of a student at Pueblo Vista Elementary School, which is a DLI school. I think that there has been some seriously flawed logic in thinking that all current DLI students in elementary school will continue to a DLI middle school. I have my daughter attending Pueblo Vista due to their environmental sciences culinary program as well as their DLI program. However, I do not intend to have her continue to a DLI's middle school. The belief that the numbers of DLI students attending a DLI-only middle school is misjudged and probably lower than the current estimated estimate for future generations. I urge the board not to make a final determination until further examination of this problem has happened and that any inconsistencies with the task force have been sorted out. I urge you not to close either of these schools at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Thane Nutson.
Hi, good evening. Thank you to the members of the board and MBUSD. I'm a parent of two students currently enrolled at Pueblo Vista. I want to share some observations from how the redesigned task force and ideas generated from this program seem to fall in short. The task force content that was publicly available looks steered and rushed to give self-fulfilling results while committing only a few days to a few parents to generate any real alternatives before closing the window. No scenario proposed achieves a long-term goal for stability or true fiscal solvency. Dr. Masetti has already alluded to more school closures in the near future, and all the scenarios fully executed only save a couple percent on the annual district budget. All the scenarios give very little, except closing some campuses and shuffling the same concept around. What if we found some middle ground that offered everyone a little something? Like, what if Brown's Valley Elementary got their K-eight, but instead they occupied the Harvest Campus to keep this school and community anchor open? Certain elementaries sure would feed into other middle schools, but to make this a longer-term solution, you can look to combine other schools in the area that the district has already alluded to closing. Everyone gives and gets something. There are many other scenarios that could maintain access to programs throughout Napa. Scenario G and the dissolution of the River Program to house a campus dedicated to wall-to-wall DLI sounds great. My own children in the DLI path would benefit from a wall-to-wall program if there was extra funding to support that. But spending more money is definitely not in line with the current conversation or goals for fiscal solvency. Intentionally under-enrolling a campus with a program that has enrollment prerequisites, providing no explicit funding to grow the program in a district that's suffering from chronic declining enrollment? Well, it sounds good, but without real investment, it seems to gamble on our students' future. If the DLI program cannot grow to fill the campus, how long until we form the next task force to discuss closing middle school DLI? Or if the district could tweak Scenario G to allow a multi-thread campus at River, kind of the same as what's at Harvest, why couldn't they coexist? It feels intentionally obtuse to suggest that one program must die to allow another to cohabitate as it has for years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Before we go on to the next speaker, Mr. Reese, I'm going to now do our pause and break, so we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you. All right, welcome back. We have been a little longer than five minutes, but there was a line for the restroom. All right. Okay, Mr. Reese, if we can continue with our next raised hand.
Lisa Gagliasso.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. I am totally unprepared. I am a parent of a sixth grader at River Middle School as well as a third grader in a special education class at West Park Elementary. And I wanted to comment on the public comments that were not read. I am very concerned and disappointed that the board did not read aloud the public comments turned in prior to the deadline for tonight's meeting. These comments are submitted in good faith that they will be read aloud for the public, and one such email tonight even had the words "read aloud" in the subject line. The letters from the last board meeting were not read aloud at the time of the meeting, and they have still not been made available to the public nor the media. When we are dealing with such an explosive subject as closing two middle schools, it is imperative that the public is allowed to hear all public comments. As recently as the March eleventh meeting, Mr. Gracia has read aloud comments received by the board through the emails for public comments, and it is incomprehensible as to why the board has not read aloud the public comments received for the last two meetings. My questions to the board: Are the board members reading these public comments? How do we know they are being read if they are not being read aloud during the meetings? And when will these public comments be made available to the public? Thank you.
Ms. Gagliasso, just for clarification, so in order for them, the only guarantee for public comment is for the person to show up and state the public comment. When they're submitted, they do not have to be read into the record, but they do have to be provided to the board for read and review. So that's how it works. So they have been provided to the board if they were submitted by the deadline, so just for clarification.
Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Masetti. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Madeline Gomez.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, board members and community members. I am requesting that you please press the pause button on this vote. Reevaluate the information that led to this proposal. I acknowledge that change is necessary, and it will affect all of us, but let us not make haste and act so quickly. As a community member, I live right in between Harvest and NBLA. I'm a former dual-language immersion teacher from NBLA. I do support language programs. I do not support closing Harvest. Both NBLA and Harvest have been the beacon of light for our neighborhood. Crime has gone down since these programs have strengthened. I no longer see youth running around causing mischief. I see big brothers and big sisters carrying heavy backpacks, walking their younger siblings to NBLA before going on to Harvest. This diamond in the rough has been polished and is a shining bright. Please do not take a sledgehammer to it. Uprooting these children from their neighborhood runs the risk of shattering their social-emotional well-being during an already emotional, trying pandemic. Businesses will suffer. Our neighborhood will be in decline. I am also a teacher at River Middle School. I came to River Middle School to train with teachers who have a formula for designing projects while meeting the social-emotional needs of students. This positive student experience can be attributed to the unique balance of the explicit and implicit curriculum, the project-based learning, a school culture centered on self-reliance, and a strong sense of community by acting for the good of the whole. So I ask you to act for the good of the whole. Please pause the button. Do not close any middle school until all roads have been carefully inspected. River Middle School is an educational option that keeps families in the district and provides a valuable alternative to the traditional middle school experience. Our diversity numbers continue to improve. Currently, the River student body identifies as fifty-point-eight percent white, thirty-eight-point-four percent Latino, ten-point-four percent multiracial. Demographics at River have changed so drastically in the last few years that the slides the district presented to the task force are already outdated. In addition, we have the capacity to grow this school with no additional capital expenditures. Why would the district close a program that is thriving and keeping dollars in the district? We have been shut down and closed in the worldwide pandemic simultaneously smothered by fires. How can we consciously put more strain on the social-emotional trauma of our families? Please press the pause button to this vote and consider other options less harmful to the whole community of families and students in Napa. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Debbie Alterstar.
We already heard from Debbie?
I think we did, yeah.
I thought I'd put my hand down.
Oh, thank you, Debbie. All right, next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Kristin Gornick.
Hello. My name is Kristin Gornick, and I'm a science teacher at Harvest Middle School. This is my first year at Harvest, although I have worked for many years at middle schools with diverse racial and socioeconomic student populations similar to those at Harvest. I want to share what a tremendous support is imparted to students who are second-language learners by attending a school with a strong dual-language academy in their own community. As they do the hard work of learning not only the core subjects of middle school, but also proficiency in a new language, they are doing it in a place where their language and culture is celebrated, is seen as an asset where they can be the experts. They are also doing it in a place where they have access to wraparound services and supports developed with the local community, right on campus, within walking distance of their homes. Harvest is a deeply respectful, supportive, and empowering environment. It is one of the most equitable places I have ever seen. I believe that the most strategic place to locate a comprehensive DLI program would be the Harvest Campus, where it could be embedded in the local community and where there is space to expand. But if that is not possible, I hope the district will consider allowing current HMS students who have Spanish language proficiency to enroll in the new DLI, given that there will initially be space so that they will have the opportunity to attend school closer to their homes with less busing and also to provide them with some of the benefits that they are currently receiving at Harvest. But I urge you to pause and seek a solution that supports both dual-language immersion and the larger HMS neighborhood and community. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Anne Segal.
Hi, thank you guys for staying up so late and working with us on this. I'm a parent of twin fourth graders at Brown's Valley Elementary, and I'd like to voice my support for our school to pilot the TK through eight program on our campus. We have a very active parent club. We have room on our campus to grow, and we have an awesome principal who supports this program. Creating a middle school at Brown's Valley keeps the kids in the public school system rather than having families move to a private education. There's a lot of excitement by both the parents, the teachers, and the students to keep our kids in a smaller learning environment for middle school. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Tammy.
Hello, my name is Tess Buck. I'm a seventh grader at River. Even though I haven't been able to experience the full middle school experience because of COVID, I still like going to school online because of my teachers. I never thought that I could connect to middle school teachers like I have. The teachers here make me feel safe and comfortable, and on my first day at River, my teachers were so much fun and nice. And I have always been, sorry, and have always been teachers that I can just come up to and talk. I would love teachers, I would love River to stay around because my brother needs a chance to go to an amazing school just like River. My brother is in fourth grade at Willow Elementary. We both used to go to Salvador Elementary, but he had to move to El Central because Salvador was closing. He almost didn't even finish preschool because they were going to close the preschool. I would too. The kids who went to the preschool spoke up, and I even talked about how important it was that my brother goes to that preschool. To this day, that preschool is still open. Not just even my brother, but younger generations should be able to have a school that feels like home. I know you probably think your minds are made up, but just listen to this letter and the people that are fighting to it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, Amy.
Hello. I am a parent of two kids at River Middle School, and I just wanted to speak out on behalf of how unique River is and that it offers an alternative to the larger middle school formats. And it gives a smaller format and setting, an environment that teaches the kids to be responsible and proactive, and they're accountable to achieving their very highest potential. Bigger schools, while I'm sure that they're full of great teachers and they have their own great experiences for students, they're not the same as a smaller school format that could provide a more individualized attention. The only option outside of River for this type of experience is private school in Napa Valley, which comes with some set of challenges and obviously isn't obtainable to all the students. For many, this will have people actually pull out of our district and go to different districts, which is not what any of us are going for. And I'm sure that a Language Academy format has benefits. I'm not clear on why six hundred DLI students are driving the decisions for the entire district. Dr. Masetti has stated that there is a focus on protecting the, quote, "high-demand programs," yet the recommendation is to close the most in-demand school location and program in the district. River model has resulted in a higher learning academic achievement results than the rest of the district as well as the rest of the state. I think we should replicate that, not shut that down. And on behalf of our kids, this particular group of middle schoolers has been through two fire seasons, earthquakes, their school moving locations, their school closing due to COVID, their school half-opening. Then they had to learn how to do school online, and they transferred from elementary school to middle school, and now they're afraid of catching and spreading a deathly disease. The trauma is significant to these guys. And all of this during arguably the most impressionable years these kids are going to live through. And now to potentially put them through their school possibly closing in seventh or eighth grade, it just is cruel and it feels unjust. These kids are worth more than a two percent savings on a budget. Could we not achieve similar savings by looking at consolidating some of our ten-plus elementary schools? If River really only cost us a million-two to run, how is closing it and spending twenty-plus million to bring the remaining schools up to code a savings? I don't understand the math. I think we all need to take a step back and be the role models these kids need. Show them it's okay to change your mind. It's okay to come up with different ideas and not agree. But we can still reach a resolution. I would just ask, please pause your decision. Let's get through this school year. Nothing is changing for these kids in the coming school year. Let's take the time we need collectively. The least we can do for these kids right now is give them some amount of stability and normalcy in their day-to-day lives. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Jenny Banta.
We're not hearing anything on our end, Mr. Reese.
Yeah.
Hello.
There you go.
Thank you. I'm Jenny Banta, parent, educator, and lifelong Nappen, speaking on behalf of Harvest Middle School. Closing Harvest will cause undeserved harm to hundreds of neighborhood families who rely on the campus as an institution of learning and point of pride for South Napa. The district has an obligation to continue to serve this part of town because MBUSD implored families years ago to believe in the promise of HMS. Leaders knew that the Old Sonoma Site was the ideal and best-equipped location for the dual- Leaders knew that the old Sonoma site was the ideal and best equipped location for the dual immersion program. It mirrors the multicultural neighborhood and allows easy access for nearby families to partake in their child's education. At Harvest, dual immersion isn't just a strand or a school within a school. The entire site cultivates language learning and a globally minded education. Moving the program up valley would diminish the integrity of dual immersion and force many students to be bust. Solving the problem with more problems is not realistic or sustainable. Our district families have also made it abundantly clear. They don't want overcrowded middle schools, even if there are empty seats to fill. They want close knit schools where social emotional health and academics are equally valued. Parents don't want kids to have limited access to PE facilities or arts options depending on where they attend. Parents expect NVUSD to be stewards of children's developmental needs, not just real estate. In the hurried attempt to rightsize the district with this proposal, NVUSD will wrongsize it instead. The immediate effect of closing Harvest appears fiscally beneficial, but the negative generational costs that will impact children in South Napa are not worth it. We know because it's happened before. The district's dedication to dual immersion and magnet schools resurrected the Ridgeview Campus. Harvest has fought so hard and so long to revive the heart and honor of its neighborhood. Closing it would be a monumental mistake. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Before we continue with more comments, we're probably a few seconds away from our ten thirty mark. We can get a motion to extend our meeting.
I'll move to extend to one AM. I hope we never get there.
A first by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
She, I'm sure student board rep doesn't want to stay till one AM either, but she's pulling, she's pulling through, we're pulling through. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye, reluctantly, yes. Now we could go into one.
Anybody abstain? Alright, let's um, hope not, we don't start our Friday morning together, but that's happened in the past and that's okay. Alright, um, next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yeah, Tony.
Good evening and let me start by saying thank you for everyone for hanging in there to hear from the community. It's very much appreciated. I also want to apologize if some of my comments are duplicate, uh, coming late in the night. Some of this has already been discussed, noting that you're here tonight to take comments that help you inform a decision you have to make next Thursday about one specific proposal presented to the board. I would like to point first to a couple of comments made, uh, this evening. Number one, the superintendent's opening statement, where she mentions that the process has been for all students, not just some. And then goes on to talk about how important the dual language immersion program is to the district without one single mention of River's, uh, social emotional learning program, where one of her own staff mentions how important that is to the district with New Tech High School, the same learning program being the seat of that program for high schools in the country. I would like to further comment that another staff member's comment when asked directly by a trustee about this program could not comment about how it would be implemented across the rest of the school should the River program be closed because not enough information has been shared yet or determined yet. Uh, thirdly, I would like to comment about a question posed by one of the trustees directly to Dr. Masetti about the impact on the district for students leaving the district as a result of the decisions being made. I can tell you anecdotally as a parishioner at Saint Polinaris Church and school, having talked to the register recently, telling me that she was shocked at how many parents from River and Harvest this week have called her asking about enrolling at their school. In conclusion, I would like to read the letter that I sent to the Napa Register as well as directly to each of the trustees today. And I wanted to say thank you very much to trustee Gracia for responding to that letter today. My letter is, I urge you to vote no on the middle school redesign task force proposal next Thursday. We do not believe the plan presented to the board of trustees this evening is focused on protecting our children nor on any sane definition of equity. It is not widely supported by the majority of the task force as has been reported. We believe that the task force process was flawed from the very beginning with data being used to drive an agenda beyond a fiscal need to close a school and that there has not been enough time for a good faith explanation, exploration of all available options protecting the various learning environments cherished by our students to be considered. And I want to note as an aside, I take umbrage by a previous commenter's uh, false narrative of a skewed demographic program for the River program. We believe that following a year of turmoil already due to the pandemic that our children uh, that are already impacted children will suffer irreparable harm in closing two middle schools. We do not support the closing of any middle school pro- schools or their program. We believe that the projected two point two million annual savings uh, does not warrant the upheaval this decision will create and will dominate our children's middle school experience. We firmly believe that there must be options for fiscal savings.
Mr. Tony, thank you so much for your comment.
Can I complete, can I complete by saying we urge you to reject the proposal being presented to you this evening?
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Norma Ortiz.
Hello.
Yes.
Um, good evening. My name is Norma Ortiz. As a parent, community member, educator and advocate, I want to make a difference that matters with my voice. Building culture, diversity, cohesion, community, equity, inclusivity is a constant job that we must consolidate with due care and responsibility to empower the learning of our children at every level. Good intentions themselves don't change the world. It's who we are and what we do, our choices, actions and situations which truly matter. What brings us here today is a matter that concerns all of us, including but not limited to the Napa Valley Unified School District, Board of Trustees, leadership staff, students, parents and the community as a whole. Unity is crucial. A decision thinking on every one of our students, the impact and the short and long term consequences of closing a school. Harvest, a dual immersion pipeline seal of literacy, sounds like the easiest solution for the district. However, it will be one that would cause more trauma, impact and injustice, primarily because it serves several of our families around those neighborhoods at a walking distance for many of those students. It would also impact many of our families that live and are served by our dual immersion schools like Pueblo Vista and Vila A and other, but that have shaped to some extent the education and forming of my daughter who is now a sixth grader at N V L A. Both schools that we consider our second home. It is no surprise that the district and many others are in financial crisis and the need is always there, but I feel there's still much more that we can do to support the needs of our children with creativity, compassion, vision and love. Again, closing Harvest is not the solution and would be a huge mistake. Why not instead invest energy, time, instruction, resources and other with our Harvest students? One of the schools that supports more English learners in this district, a sec- at a secondary level. Our Harvest families have to work long shifts to provide feed and support their children. I ha- I have inquired and I'm still waiting for answers on what was or has been done with the vintage farm Yonville and Mount George properties revenue for another possibility, possibility alternative scenario in this respect. Why not lease River to a private school in the meantime so it could generate some earnings and so Napa Valley Unified School District does not have to close a school and let the community support or perhaps a future bond? I invite the board to take action by one that is in the best interest of the community it is serving. In my opinion, with the item of redistricting and now this, the closure of Harvest, I feel there had been and will be violations of civil rights and other. Once again, on behalf of the Latino population, there's evidence to suggest that. The leadership team formed a selected committee to serve as the task force where there wasn't much room for community to ask questions and scenarios A through C were already fabricated. At least one wasn't a real option. The lack of town hall meetings to really demonstrate solidarity and empathy with the needs and concerns of the Napa Valley Unified School District families and community, not just one or two meetings with the, with this very important item. With all respect is and was disappointing.
Yes, Ortiz, thank you for your comment. Your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Dee Willer.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good evening. I'm a district parent of two children and I'm also an advocate for public education. Knowledge is empowering and capable of changing lives for the better, but most importantly, it brings along with it one of our greatest gifts, hope. This is something public education has given me. But while I believe knowledge is power and power is good, in the wrong hands it can lead to bad. Right now, I believe the power of knowledge is in the wrong hands and those hands are using it to destroy our community's most valuable resource, its schools. I stand united in this belief with over ten thousand people and even more as each day passes and I stand united with every student suffering at its hands. We have lost our hope. We believe the district has not only been mismanaging the resources our community provides with taxes and our votes, it's been systematically closing, dismantling and redesigning schools that have any programs the district feels sets them apart from the rest. Even when the programs are shown to be an asset, not only to the students and communities surrounding them, but to the district as a whole. Its sights are now set on Harvest and River with claims based on budgetary constraints and data, which it's been heavily relying on to justify its actions. For example, the planning enrollment projection data shown earlier. Let me make clear, this is projected data showing a potential gradual trend of decreased enrollment. Potential and gradual are key points, so why the rush to close schools now? Data shows an estimated total loss of two thousand six hundred forty six students over eight years, but the largest proportion of student loss is at elementary school level, showing one thousand two hundred and forty seven. Middle school populations are the least affected through time, showing a loss of five hundred and sixty seven. The city of Napa only has four public middle schools. According to elementary school migration data, Napa has fourteen public elementary schools, eight of which, which have high numbers of neighborhood students leaving those schools by open enrollment. It is compelling to say the least. If justification is declining enrollment, why isn't the student targeting elementary schools, especially ones students are migrating from? But I'd like to make it very clear, I do not believe the district needs to close any more schools or it has closed enough already for the wrong reasons. Dismantling the Harvest and River school programs only saves one point two percent of the entire annual district budget. If the district is so concerned about revenue at the expense of its students, why can't it wait a little while longer? There are other solutions, including putting a new bond measure to increase funding on the twenty twenty two ballot. This is traumatic and devastating, but makes it worse, the district is not only forcing this on the community during a pandemic, it's spreading disinformation and propaganda citing biased and misleading data and manipulating parents, employees and redesigned task forces to get what it wants, to get what it wants. When will our community get what it wants? Parents need to be heard. We know what's best for our children. It's painfully clear the district either does not see it that way or just doesn't care. Vote to reject the middle school task force recommendation. Help us restore our faith in you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Lauren Piombo.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hello, um, I wrote a letter in October to, um, the school board about I have three boys who went through dual immersion, lived in Westwood for almost thirty years and my big concern about closing Harvest Middle School. Things started out with just four options, one being do nothing. And all of a sudden, we do have this other option that is closing Harvest and River and it just, the process just feels flawed to me and pushed. And realizing that only two percent is what you're going to be saving by closing a middle school, just it, it, it it just doesn't seem right. There's got to be another way. It does feel rushed. The kids have been through so much. I just feel that the process is somehow flawed as well. I want to echo what a lot of people have said. And I think there could be some real good new creative solutions to dealing with the problems that we have with, um, declining enrollment and coming up with some really great strategies and ways to get people to stay and and come back to our schools. And I think closing Harvest Middle School would be absolutely devastating to this neighborhood. It is a beacon of hope. It's a beacon of education. It's a beacon of, um, cultures coming together and, and I just, I just can't imagine it being gone. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Jonas, Jonathan Richard. You have to unmute your mic, Mr. Richard. Okay. Uh, Lisa.
Yes, hello.
Yes.
Um, hi, uh, my name is Lisa and, uh, I, I'm not as quite as prepared as some of these other folks here, but I thought I had something different to say. My son went to Vishi Elementary, which is kind of a standard school like we would all recognize historically. And I think that Silverado and Redwood are also kind of like standard schools. And that kind of school, it, it, we discovered in third grade that he had dyslexia, which apparently about twenty percent of kids have that kind of learning disability. The student, the teachers at Vishi bent over backwards to try to help him. And, but his fifth grade year was extremely dark. He wore a hood all the time. He had no confidence. Then in sixth grade, we, we could have afforded to send him to a private school, but we chose River. And they have a special onboarding process for sixth graders. They help them find out how they fit into the community. The social and emotional development was critical for my son. Within the first trimester, he was able to get on the honor roll. He fully has confidence in all of his work and he does it all by himself. And, um, he gave up his IEP that he had to have in elementary school. And that's because of the way River runs their school. The teachers were able to work with him flawlessly. And I don't think that that will be able to be replicated quickly in all the other middle schools if the River program goes away. So my suggestion is that we keep River as it is for the two to five years for the DLI program to grow into the size of that school. And then we use the, we grow River as big as we can, bring in as many teachers as we can to teach them the social and emotional development. So then we can take the chance to spread it to the other middle schools. And I think it could be done much more effectively than it can be done in like one simple year. Oh, just send all the teachers over. So that is my suggestion. I also believe that the person who said that, um, people won't leave um, because they saw that in elementary school, people didn't leave the district. I believe that is not correct because, um, in elementary, they had more choices of where to go, but in middle school, they don't. So I, I think you have to consider that there will be more leaving of the district for the closure of River than you know, you can't just say that's a zero number. Uh, thank you for your help, uh, and thank you for considering everything and thanks for listening. Bye.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Duncan.
Hi, sorry, that's actually my husband. I'm Julie. Hi, um, so Julia Valenti McGuire. I've got four boys in the district. Um, I have three at Pueblo Vista and one who is a sixth grader at Harvest. Um, sorry, I like ran in here. So, um, I kind of have you know, a, a hand in both pots here because, um, I've got a Harvest kiddo. All my kids are DLI. We are also, um, not open enrolled to Harvest. We walk to school. Um, so we are also in the neighborhood. Um, so we, we're invested in, um, this community as well. Um, so I'm not really able to one hundred So I'm not really able to 100% put myself behind passing this entire proposal, but I am very interested in and supportive of the Dual Language Academy. My big question would be just because I know from, you know, seven years at this immersion thing now, how hard it is to keep B-clad credentialed teachers and to find them. So in order to, you know, potentially have an entire school that is more focused and more robust than Harvest is, would include having to have a lot more B-clad certified teachers. And if people who, you know, maybe are still up at 10:50, you don't know what that means. It's bilingual, cross-cultural language and academic development. It's another name for a bilingual authorization. So it's not the same thing to just be a native Spanish speaking teacher and have a certification. You have to go through a pretty long litany of additional certifications and qualifications. And it's not just to be able to teach in Spanish, it's to be able to serve the English language learners that are crucial to dual immersion as a program. So my question would just be before moving forward with your fees too of transitioning these kiddos from where they're at to where they may potentially be. At what point you will be able to assure the community and these DLI parents that you're fully staffed and that you can, I'm saying you, I don't mean you, but that we can assure that the model being put forward is sustainable and possible and will in fact go forward so that these families who are open enrolling their children for the 2022, 2023 school year, school year will know that they will actually be getting the robust program that is being put forward. So that's my question and thank you guys for standing up so late. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Ms. Reese.
Just Jessica De Gregorio.
Hi, thanks. Great job with the last name. I, good evening and yes, thank you for your time. I have a serious issue with the misinformation and the erroneous perception I've been hearing lately, especially tonight, that Harvest's DLI program hasn't been successful. Most of this messaging is coming from those that have not had personal experience with the program nor the school. I want the public to know that Harvest won the National ISA School of the Year, Colegio del Año Award from the Spanish Embassy in 2016. Harvest students win the ISA Escribo en Español state writing contest consistently each year, as long as I've worked at Harvest for the last six years. Our students continue to thrive into, into high school and earn their seal of my literacy. Misinformation can be like poison to a community. I spoke to a parent of a DLI fifth grader just last week who shared that she wasn't sure where to send her child and hasn't received the proper information from her school site. I had to explain to her that it benefits her son to continue in the DLI program in middle school in order to earn the seal of my literacy upon graduating. That the trajectory of DLI students' proven academic excellence begins to surpass their grade level peers in the upper grades. If our elementary school site administrators are not informing their parents about the importance of the DLI path, regardless of where it's located, this shows a lack of true investment in the program. There seems to be a negative perception of Harvest and I'm here to tell you it's wrong. So many are quick to judge the school because of its location and demographic, a clear example of implicit bias and covert racism. We are two, we are three fourths Latino, one third of them EL, and to Harvest, they are family. It does not sit well with me that we will now close that already, will already provides educational and social emotional support within their own community. And I must acknowledge that social emotional learning is all, also of utmost support importance of Harvest. You can ask any district student services team members and they, I am confident that they will tell you that Harvest does good wellness work. Questions about scenario G I have, how would the district afford to, the variety of busing needs proposed for the Harvest neighborhood? The Language Academy proposed in scenario G is exactly what Harvest basically offered up until this year. How will they fund this extra offering of a language, which we also as a site had up till this year, but could not sustain when the district removed Harvest seventh period day? And believe me, we tried our best. We worked hard on our master schedule to make it work, but we couldn't. It took our site, seven Spanish B-clad teachers up until this year to offer Spanish to all students. And this year, that shrunk to just one with a seven period day. How then will this new campus afford to have 625 students all take Spanish? How will the district afford the proposal of before and after school programming to continue at a Harvest neighborhood if it were to close? These expenses would chip away at the 2.2 million proposed savings. So I ask you to consider that as the board. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Ms. Reese.
Yes, Alejandro Guerrero.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for, for staying up and for listening to, to my, to me speak. My name is Alejandro Guerrero. I'm a proud parent of an NBLA student, also Harvest middle schooler and a soon to be kindergartner. I am like to express my concern for the closing of Harvest Middle School. I feel like the last couple of years, there's been constant conversation about school closures. Not only school closures, but programs like the Legacy Youth Project was making impacts in our community was violently closed as well. I think it's time to, rather than close Harvest Middle School, we should really consider how can the Language Academy be, be brought there? Like the person before me spoke about and make even, it was already doing that, but how can we bring it back and grow it, right? Also invest in ethnic studies, bring back the Legacy Youth Project, support it, grow it and bring in educators who are, who are, who are prepared in ethnic studies to, to make impacts in the community. I think when we, we, we remove programs like Harvest or close schools like that, we're really sending a message to the community. That basically, when we think about what public institution is left in, on the west side of, of Napa, well, the only institution that's going to be left is a juvenile hall, right? Like one of my colleagues has mentioned, what message is that sent to our community? What's important to the west side of, of Napa? A juvenile hall, really? So I think we need to really rethink this. I, I really am supportive Harvest. My daughter who goes to school there now loves it. The social emotional support that she receives is fantastic. In addition to the Spanish she's been learning, I only wish she could have participated in Legacy Youth Project and other programs similar to that. So with that, I just want to close with, with really, there's been conversations about equity, right? It's about really providing students what they need to be successful, the most neediest in our community. But also beyond that, it's about building a sense of belonging, right? Of dignity and justice. And how are we doing that, right? By closing a middle school? And finally, I'll just say that we, I heard Dr. Mestes speak about this idea of healing for our community. How are you going to heal a community when you're re-traumatizing it? So I'm just, I'm flabbergasted by these, these conversations that we have to have over and over and over again. And I really do hope that the board spends time and thinks about and listens to the, the folks tonight and halts this decision to close any middle school. It's not for our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Ms. Reese.
William C.
Hello, my name is William. I'm the father of a kindergartner over at Brown's Valley. Obviously, the pandemic has affected a lot of people in many different ways, financially, especially for the school district. Along with the presentation, I think at the beginning of the meeting when they were talking about, you know, the housing that's being built in Napa is not honestly cohesive to larger families and the general projections in regards to school enrollment. Which looking at that, I definitely can see where you guys are going to have to make some hard decisions. So in regards to my kindergartner and, you know, seeing what's best for her, I've lived in that my whole life. I think for Brown's Valley, at least if they can, you know, help out in a way, making this transition will be easier for some students by relieving the stress that, you know, at least two or potentially three of the middle schools are going to be experiencing in the next few years if there is going to be a school closure, because you're going to have to send those students elsewhere. But if Brown's Valley can be a part of the solution to help relieve some of the, not necessarily overcrowding, but definitely larger class sizes elsewhere by running a K through eighth program, I think that'd be great. For my kindergartner, being able to stay in the same school from K through eighth, sounds great. She's been loving it despite all the changes of the pandemic. And she's excelling at Brown's Valley too, just with the attention that the teachers are giving her, the smaller class sizes due to COVID safety. You know, I'd like to continue on with that smaller class size options if possible. I know there's talks about piloting, you know, at least the sixth grade possibly next year to help out with some of that transitions down the road, see how it goes kind of thing. Brown's Valley has the campus space. Frank Silva, the principal, seems excited by the idea and is a really truly a great leader for that school. And, you know, I think he'd be able to run with that program and really make it excel and you know, looking at the projections down the road and the next several years for middle school sites, it looks like it's just going to keep on going lower and lower and lower. So, you know, we may be looking at some other options for school closures on the road and might totally get it. But if it's successful at Brown's Valley, you know, maybe you can move that K through eighth option to some of the other elementary school sites and hopefully minimize some of the closures down the road. But I think Brown's Valley is definitely an option to look at for K through eighth. I know it's hard for everybody to kind of go through these closures, but if Brown's Valley can help out with some of that potential overcrowding down the road, I think that's a great option to look into. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Ms. Reese.
Yes, Sylvia Regalatto Zachlow. Sorry, it's Sandra Zivkovich.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
No, we don't hear her, Mr. Reese.
Yeah, sorry about that. Jessica Rockwood.
Hi, thank you. Hello, I'm speaking tonight as an NVUSD elementary parent and through my lens as an educator. I first want to thank the task force for the important work and difficult work that you've undertaken. Closing one, let alone two schools is a devastating process for our children, for our community, and it can't have been easy. I'm disheartened by the proposed closure of Harvest, our family's home middle school. And after hearing Harvest parents and educators speak tonight, that disappointment is growing. Tonight, however, I would like to look forward and speak briefly to the details presented tonight regarding these closures happening during the 2022, 23 school year. While years time is certainly necessary for reworking programming and making these transitions happen properly, I worry for our current fifth grade students and families from all elementary sites that feed to Harvest Middle School. If the decision is made for the closure of Harvest, and I hope that maybe there's still some hope for Harvest. But if that decision is made, students will make a big move from elementary to middle school only to be uprooted a second time and moved to a different middle school as seventh graders. Having taught middle school, I know that the inconsistency will have a direct effect on not only social emotional wellness, but academic success. I believe that if the proposed plan is adopted, the district has a duty to make the transition one that is least disruptive to students. I would urge the district to consider a revision in the rollout that would allow incoming sixth graders possibly, specifically those affected by the closures, but allowing those sixth graders possibly to remain at their elementary sites for an additional year in the upcoming 21, 22 school year. If they get to stay in their space, they're going to thrive. They'll learn in a familiar space. That will allow the middle school redesign to come to full realization before these students make that transition to middle school. And this would by design allow multiple elementary school sites in our district pilot the beginnings of a K8 model. That's an idea in itself beneficial to solving the ultimate problem of declining enrollment. It's something that has come up several times during this process, but has also come up in the district prior to the start of this middle school design process. As a parent bouncing a child between three schools over three years at such an important developmental time is unfathomable. So I just hope to see that considered and brought forward as we move forward in this process. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Sarah Vidal Schmitz.
Good evening. Hello.
Yes.
Dual language bilingual education, first and foremost, is about creating educational access for students who have been linguistically oppressed and marginalized by US educational systems. The primary goal is not about creating more linguistic privilege for students who already have it. Dr. Jose Medina. I believe scenario G does not create educational access for all Napa Unified students. Harvest Middle School did. When we had Spanish for all, it was all who could get to Harvest by walking from Snow Elementary, all who came from across the street. I have not seen evidence that there will be equal access to this Language Academy on the Salvador campus. I have not seen a transportation plan that will remove the obstacle of transportation for our socioeconomically disadvantaged students or our South Napa English language learners. I am concerned this new school will not have balanced demographics. I am concerned this new school will not be able to offer Spanish for all. They will only be able to offer Spanish for those whose parents are able to open enroll and drive them there. I am concerned that the total savings will be far less than 2.2 million with far more unidentified consequences. I am not convinced that middle school dual immersion will succeed anywhere other than where it has been rooted in South Napa for the past 18 years, a stone's throw from our sister school NBLA. I am not convinced that Napa Unified is hearing from all of its stakeholders tonight. This meeting has been dominated by our English speaking parents. I am not convinced that we have had enough time or enough creative thinking to solve this issue without creating new issues. I urge the trustees to be brave enough to not succumb to the pressures of a district created timeline and to please reject option G. We can do better for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Joey Schmitz.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Joey Schmitz. I'm an educator and a parent of an NBLA fifth grader. The district has pushed for the outcome of closing Harvest from the beginning. Each time the district wrongfully claims Harvest to be closed, Harvest advocates disarm the fallacious arguments with context for naked data and logic. And each time after, instead of doing the difficult work of finding viable alternative solutions, the district goes back to the drawing board to manufacture another excuse for why Harvest must close. To this date, the district has been unable to make a convincing argument for why closing Harvest is financially responsible, equitable or ethical. The district continues to try to lead our community to their fixed and false conclusion by making promises and assurances to various groups of parents, dividing our community, pitting schools against each other. pitting schools against each other, creating the criteria and controlling information. The task force findings were not organically discovered, but predetermined. The lack of transparency has rightfully led to distrust. Our community was denied an authentic process and now will be denied an appropriate solution. It is disappointing how poorly this matter has been handled. It is disappointing that our district assumed they had come to the correct conclusion and tried to work backwards to make the facts fit. It is disappointing that the district used decades of intentional implementation of dual immersion and social emotional learning as interchangeable parts in a machine and that the value of those investments will be watered down or lost due to the proposed solutions that seem to solve nothing in a time of crisis. What we need are solutions that do not close a school. We need transparent and authentic process. We need data with content, context, that tells the whole story. We need to start with facts, evidence, and logic to bring us to conclusions and not waste time, money, and energy on attempting to make facts fit preconceived outcomes when they don't. We need leadership that unites us with their best possible argument. Option D, option G is not it. And closing Harvest is not it either. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment.
Jonathan Richard.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I was on a little bit earlier and got kicked off, so I'm glad we have time and I apologize for for the length of the meeting tonight. I commend each of you for putting all of this time and effort into these difficult decisions. River School, one of the first charter schools established in California, has been a gem for Napa and a wonderful success in so many ways. We enjoyed sending our daughter to River School, commuting from outside of the district to attend the school. And as a result, she has remained an NVUSD student through high school, attending New Technology High, now a junior there. She thrived in the unique River program and loved the ever growing diversity of the school. It continues to grow day by day. I've been disgusted to see the movement taken by Dr. Masetti that perceived railroading the school with questionable data and ethics to relinquish its charter and her continued negativity and bias towards the school with a long list of broken promises leading to this moment. You each have the need to heal this community, not divide it. River School is but a source of pride within the Napa Valley. We now face the possible closure of River now being rebranded as a redesign. I worry anytime someone seems to rush these type of decisions. I implore each of you to question the data. Listen to families. Listen to all the examples on how this process has been flawed and does not support the needs of students. Our children do not need added trauma. Healing is needed and creativity and budgeting is required. I implore you to not accept this proposal. We have seen the community does not trust this process. As a family, we have come up with our backup plan outside of this district. Our son, who was scheduled to attend River School this coming year, will now attend elsewhere with the closing of or redesign of River School. And I certainly hope this is not the case. We are not alone. Many families are seeking other options and yet the district fails to even try to collect this important information. Closing River is not a cost savings. It is taking a district gem and throwing it away. Question the data. I repeat, question the data. It continues to change. River and Harvest should be protected and supported. These students should be protected and supported. Question the data.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
Yes, Tim Kennedy.
Can you can you hear me?
Yes.
As a former Redwood student who grew up in the Harvest community, I would say there's nothing wrong with traveling to an outside community to learn other blocks, other ethnicities, and learning what they have to give to the community. I do have students in Alta Heights, River, and Vantage. I would say in the beginning of this conversation, I would have said, save River. Now I am saying save this and River. You can't say that one group, whether it be a Dujin group or a one over the other. I think Silverado is a great school, River's a great school, and Harvest is a great school. I think you can put River and Silverado and Redwood all in one group and make them all one. There's no reason that you can't save the people who need River and the people who need Harvest in one group and put the other two as far as Silverado and River another. You should be able to save both. Keep them all together and make make River one group and Harvest another. Keep them separate. If you're gonna if you're gonna put one group to the side, it should be Silverado. As a kid who went to Redwood, that should be the one to go. Sorry. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you for your comment.
Sylvia Regalado Zachlo.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much. I want to also echo just the appreciation that we all have for the extension of time that you're giving us. And when the pandemic is over, you all have an open invitation to come and have a cup of coffee with me. Because I think that the work that we have all been doing, I am a seventh grade parent at American Canyon Middle School. I was also a part of the middle school redesign task force. And I think that, you know, we all came into this wanting the best for our kids. And you all, in one way or another, have been parents, guardians of children, and now you're the stewards of a much bigger school district. And so one of the things that I continuously hear, and I want to say something different than, you know, one of the things that I continuously hear is we are willing to do whatever it takes for our kids. We all want the best across the district. And the things that are the best are the different programs that strengthen our young children that will make them resilient into the future, that will make them great future leaders and make them successful long after we're gone. I understand that you guys inherited, you know, a precarious situation with regards to the finances of the district with regards to the state of affairs. And, you know, it's not a it's not an enviable place to be in. However, you have the ability to say, we're not going to repeat the mistakes of the past. And there can be a commitment that can be made in a very different way by reinvesting in schools that have been forgotten in a neighborhood that has tried against all odds that have been placed against it to, you know, overcome. And I believe that Harvest Middle School really does need to live on for the community, for the extended community. When my daughter learned about the possibility of Harvest closing, she said, where will I go for string buddies? This is a hub much bigger than the neighborhood that it currently is in. And while we all want programs to be expanded across the district in middle school, I think maybe maybe we're overlooking something and we have overlooked something and you have the power right now to say, you know what, we're hearing that programs are really important. So let's pause on this decision. And let's look at what programs parents are wanting. What does that look like in terms of growing the the programs and the services that are available so that all kids can have the same opportunities? And at the same time, a neighborhood that will not have the same options, that will send their kids wherever they need to go to school, they're going to make it happen. And it's going to be much more taxing on them than on other of us. And so keep that in mind. Thank you so much for your time.
Sandra Zivkovich.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to point you out, you know, like how both schools are really important for our community, Harvest, as, you know, Spanish speaking people and in South Napa. And then also River, you know, for the small group that nobody ever mentions, you know, there's other people coming from other countries. They're not Spanish speaking, but from other countries. And for us, my oldest son finished River School and I have daughter that she's supposed to be sixth grade in the fall in the River School, and we were really hoping to have her in that River School. It meant a lot for us because people who come from other countries, you know, we don't have relatives here. We don't have families to to visit for holidays or anything. It's just family in for in at home. And River was like home for us. Their program benefited our son so much tremendously in the stage of maturing in middle school. Their program involved him so much with other students. And we are just endlessly thankful to River. We hope that it's going to stay open for our daughter, too. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese.
This concludes our comments, President Gonzalez-Mottis.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reese. And thank you to the public, for those of you who are still joining us at this 11th hour of the night. Okay, so now we are, we have heard presentations and by the words of what I've counted, a little over, a little below 70 comments. Public comments came through tonight in person and then dozens more that came through via email. So we want to open it up to any potential discussion or comments that you'd like to make. I know that next week we are faced with our next decision, but you want to start start that off, trustee Gracia?
Yes, so I'd like to start by sharing my appreciation for the hard work done by the task force. Over the last four months, the task force has been diligent and deliberate in their operation. Tonight, after six long meetings, they have delivered to us a recommendation. The hundreds of hours of discussion, deliberation, community input, and learning should not be ignored. That effort must be respected, and I will strongly consider the recommendation put forth by the task force tonight. However, I have also had many discussions with folks in the community, in the district, and throughout the Napa Valley who have brought forth additional considerations and concerns. Be it in person, via email, or here at the microphone tonight, I have heard from many people who have urged a different result than the one proposed by the task force. These concerns also must be respected and strongly considered. I will spend time over the next week in deep contemplation around the various options that have been presented. I am, however, motivated to achieve the cost savings necessary to keep NVUSD out of state receivership. I cannot in good conscience adopt any recommendation that doesn't include the necessary operational cost savings sufficient to keep our reserves above 3%. Some in the community have suggested to us to proceed more slowly and not take action on April 22 to close a school. I must push back against this request as the cost savings must be realized for the 22-23 school year. Even with such savings, we are projected to drop to the 3% reserve level. In order to realize those savings, we must allow parents the opportunity to open enroll this coming fall in their school of choice for the 22-23 school year. Delay will not change the result or make it so that we don't have to close a school. Delay will just further exacerbate our budget woes and complicate the open enrollment of students at the middle school level for 22-23 school year. I don't want to close a school, but the financial necessity of closing a school cannot be ignored or delayed. It must be done to maintain the physical solvency of NVUSD. As I stated, I appreciated all the hard work by the people on the task force and also appreciated the effort of those who disagree with the task force recommendation. I have a lot to think about over the course of the next week and am not looking forward to having to make this difficult decision on the 22nd.
Just you doing, go ahead.
So, one of the things as a new trustee that we're taught to focus on is that, and actually, I think the first time I heard this was from former trustee Shunk when he was advising people who thought they might want to become board members, was that we represent as board members the entire district. The 16,892 students and their families, the entire community of Napa, Yountville, and American Canyon. What what that means to me is that it's not just my area that I represent. It's also not the communities, the school communities that I'm familiar with, that my kids are in. It's a really hard a hard thing to kind of pull back from from those connections. Tonight, I, you know, I appreciated all of the comments. I took notes from all the comments because I, too, like trustee Gracia, have a lot of of hard thinking to do in the next week. Yeah, as we all do. But what what I kept thinking, too, was that there are thousands of middle school students. And we've heard, you know, we heard from from people who are passionate about their their educations, but it was only a portion of those people who will be affected by this decision. We have to take that in, take those 75 comments. But also remember that there are hundreds more students in in the district, in the middle schools in this district, plus thousands more coming up in in the future that we have to consider. It's a this decision is beyond this year, it's beyond next year, it's beyond the the it's beyond any of us individually, it's beyond any any small, it's a big decision. In other words, not news to any of us, but it's our jobs is to kind of fold what we learned from the task force, what we learned from the the public, what we learned from staff tonight into that broad context that we as as the governing team have to have to to incorporate. And that that's a really difficult thing and something that requires a lot of work. And I'm confident that my colleagues here will be putting that work in in the next week. You know, on top of what we've already done, so good luck to all of us.
trustee Water.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Well, one thing I know, after working in this district for as long as I did and talking with people, is every single parent in our school district wants the best for his or her child. And, you know, so we've, you know, we got to thread the needle, don't we? And I keep thinking about superior programming and what that takes. And it does take money. And I have to pay attention to that. I'm going to study this. People have given me a lot to think about. And, you know, I did meet with And, you know, I did meet with, with one of the task force members. This week and another gentleman who spoke, they gave me a lot to think about. And. I guess I'd like to just close by echoing what Evan Versolini of River School said. You know, you've got a lot of, we've got some very opinionated, passionate people here and no matter what happens. Don't do, we don't want to do our students and each other a disservice, no matter what decision we make. Let's not criticize each other, you know, whether we agree or not. What we're all about is helping our students. That's what is, that is what's uppermost in my mind. And that's what we need to do. You know, we all have to live in this community together. And we all have something in common. We're, we're all here tonight speaking because we care. And I, I think that's a good place to start from. That's it.
Thank you, trustee Water.
I really can't add very much to what everyone has said. You listen to everybody that comes to the mic and they speak so passionately about their child and their community. And I think I can speak for the board in that we have received. Correspondence from so many different stakeholders that were not represented here this evening. There is a, a myriad of opinions out there. Everybody has kind of the privilege to look at it through the individual lens and how it impacts them and I respect that and understand it. We have the responsibility to look at it as trustee Dooley said. Through the perspective of seventeen thousand students, that the lens is broad. And our responsibility is to make sure that we provide the best education. And all those support mechanisms that everybody has, you know, referenced that should be a part of education. No matter where your child lands. To trustee Gracia's point, I think we've all learned a lot this evening. We respect everybody's advocacy and opinions, the task force. And we will respectfully take all of this back. Think about it thoughtfully and carefully and. And we will see you all next Thursday.
Trustee Raiser.
I don't know that I have much different to add, but I, I do want to thank all of the community members that. Sent us comments and have reached out for phone calls and have sent emails. And all the community members that stayed up late and hung out, hung in there with us to share your viewpoint. I agree that we, it's such a different perspective to sit as a trustee and. Know that our obligation is to consider what is best for the entirety of the district. And I understand what it's like to be a passionate stakeholder. And so I thank all of the stakeholders for their passion and, and, and time. We all have a lot to think about and I just want to assure anyone who's still listening to us at this point. That this is something that we all take incredibly seriously. So to anyone who has said, please consider this or have you considered these, this impact. On this population or on this program. Let me assure you that we are all considering all of those impacts. And it's very difficult in a time of loss not to focus on the loss. And so what I'm trying to do as a former River parent and, and the trustee that lives down the road from Harvest Middle School. Is to. Think about the, the decision very carefully, of course, and, and everyone that will be impacted. But also to think about what this process, the gains that we have to make. When we get on the other side of this process. And those gains are programmatic improvements and consistency. And there's really, this hasn't been, been emphasized, I think, but. But the equity of having excellent programming available that's consistently available at all schools. For all of our students is, I think, a real. Gain that we're, that's gonna come out of it and it is the trade-off that we are forced to make. Because of our, our financial situation. And, you know, to say, well, it's only one point two percent of the budget and that's not, not a big deal. Or it shouldn't, shouldn't be more important than this, these negative impacts on our students. If you, I don't remember even what the slide was, but. If we, we have no choice but to make this decision. We have no choice but to find these savings. And if you think that there's one to two million dollars of savings to be paid out of other. Places in our budget. We would have found them. I have confidence in the district leadership team that, that. This is what has to happen and some version of this is what has to happen. So I just want to assure the community that we are all. We are all very mindful of the negative repercussions and whatever the outcome may be. As we all go home and toss and turn. Because I think all of us are tossing and turning at night about this. It's not something that we walk away and stop thinking about. That, that we will also be mindful of being proactive and. Purposeful in the ways that we can mitigate the negative impacts. To whomever is negatively impacted by the decision that we arrive at. And I want to also echo the thank you to the middle school redesign task force members because that was a big commitment and a lot of time. And a, a difficult circumstance and a situation to, to wrap your head around and participate in. So, thank you for that engagement as well and. I have a lot to think about and, and thank you to all of the, all my fellow trustees. And, and Dr. Masetti as well and the staff for, because we're all putting in a lot of hours and thinking about this. Very hard and as trustee Waters said, we're all here because we care about the children of our community. And we care about our mission to deliver the, the most excellent education that we can to each and every one of our students. So, that's all.
Thank you, trustee Raiser. Trustee Chu.
So I, I want to say again and reiterate what everybody else says that we have a lot of. A lot of things on our mind right now. You know, I got into really understanding the school board when ACM S two was being. Considered and then it was canceled. So I have sat in our commentators' seats. I guess now instead of in their shoes, you're not standing in front of us, but. I did speak to some of the board members here. And I know how difficult it is to come out of your, your comfort zone to really advocate. For your school, but it's important and so we do it. So I really appreciate, appreciate that because I, I feel for you. I've been there. And I, I, I think, you know, I really wish that when we decided not to. Or not we, when the board at the time decided not to build ACM S two, that that was gonna. Solve our problem at the middle school. Unfortunately, it was not. It was a little naive. About it, but I'm learning a lot while I'm on the board. And I really wish that that was the end-all because we didn't want programs to suffer at, in our school district. At all levels. So, you know, it, right now, being on the board, I no longer only have my two children that I'm thinking about. I no longer have the six hundred kids that would have attended ACM S two to think about. Or the one thousand kids that are at ACM S right now. I have seventeen thousand kids on my mind. So, and my husband will tell you, I wake up at three o'clock in the morning thinking about this. Sometimes waking him up and saying, hey, what do you think? So we do take all of your comments to heart, all of your emails, all of your public comments here at the meeting. It, it's going to be a tough decision for me, for sure. It's not, not, you know, not very comfortable, but I think we're here to do that hard work. For your students and for my students too.
Thank you, trustee Chu. You know, that one point two, one point five percent that kept being mentioned, you know, when you pin that right next to how close. That number is to our reserves. So reserves is just three percent. That just shows what a one percent difference does. It can quickly tip us over and, and we don't want to be in a situation where the state takes over. Because then we, then we lose complete control. That was going on my mind is when folks were talking about that, that one percent seems little, but. That's how, that's how close we are to potentially losing control of our, of our, of our district. I think I'll just leave by saying that tonight, I think everybody played their roles. Our community played their role by coming out and advocating and speaking and sharing their thoughts and their ideas and. Making their requests and asking their questions. And so have we as a, as a board. We have done our, our due diligence. And listening to our community, for those of us that have been serving years and then remembering our, our previous. Trustees to the history that's been shared with us. And that's the journey that we're gonna continue and I'm, I'm, I'm always an optimist. And I know we will, we will, we will get through this and I, and I felt a lot of passion in the voices. And a lot of care for students and I think that's what's gonna unite us because that's already uniting us right now. We're, we're here for that reason because we care. Alright, last action item for tonight is an action for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Chu. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright. Anybody abstain or oppose? Okay, our meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a good night.